Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ouch, that's tough. You guys, are you guys hearing that feedback?
Yeah. Sometimes that happens if there's somebody has two computers on next to each other.
Yeah, well, the three of us are sitting six feet apart from each other here. But it sounds like mine doesn't, isn't as bad as Bob's was. I was gonna say, I can move too.
Yours is fine, actually. As far as when you talk, we can hear you.
Okay, Bob's gonna try to move and see if that helps.
All right. Well, that's a win on two fronts. First of all, I don't have feedback, and second of all, I get to take off my mask, so I win. All right, sorry for the delay. We're waiting for Patty Grimm to get online. As soon as she gets sorted, we'll get started. All right, Patty's close to signing in. All right, Patty, I see you're online. Can you just unmute and let us know you're fully capable and can listen?
There we go, I got one. Okay, sorry for the delay. I had to reboot my computer.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll start with our pledge to the flag. To the flag, like, of United States of America, and to the Republican Party, which is stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. All right, Ashley, our secretary, please note the role. We have seven of our members here tonight. And we're gonna start off, tonight, we're going to be going with our public comment. We're starting with our public comment. We are gonna have the mics like we did on Tuesday night. We're not gonna be doing Q and A. We don't have anybody from the administration here, so we're not doing Q and A. We are gonna have public comment. For the first Q and A, we're gonna be limiting that to the items on the agenda tonight, which is for interviewing. It says six candidates. We had one withdraw earlier this morning, so we have five candidates for the vacant board seat. So typically, public comment for the first section is limited to just the agenda item. So does anybody have their hands up or would like to speak? Ashley, you want to take care of this section first, please?
Yeah, there is one hand up, but I cannot unmute them. I can only put them on chat for some reason.
Laura, if you can help us with that.
Did you? It's still coming up chat. Is that you, Nolan? Lewis?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can.
Okay, all right.
If you can state your address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. And anything you're speaking about is to be based on the agenda for tonight, which is interviewing the new board member.
Okay, all right, it's 1137 Brook Road. I went K through 12 through Potts Grove, four kids ages one, two, six, and 10. My questions for the candidates. Knowing how the vote went on Tuesday, how would you have voted, keeping in mind the parent survey results? With majority wanting to fully open, then hybrid, and then virtual. How would you interpret the teacher survey that was mentioned by many of the board members that voted against hybrid? I would also like to ask what you thought of the process of this, and the answers given by the current board members. The "it's just safer" answer was not acceptable to me, and I feel like many others feel the same way. It's not... That, it's safer to not fly or drive, it's safer to not use electricity, but we still fly, drive, and use electricity. Given that the rejected administrative plan provided to the board could follow federal, state, and county guidelines, what specific criteria would you observe to make a determination? Since the current board did not vote in favor of their majority constituents, even though the guidelines provided could be followed? That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Yep.
And that appears to be it. There was only one comment.
All right, so with that, we're gonna be moving into the interview section of tonight. We're not gonna bring anybody in just now, but I wanted to go over. So those of you who looked at the agenda prior to, will see that we had originally six candidates who submitted their packages, complete packages, and you see the names there. Earlier this evening, as the folks came in, we had them draw numbers to see who was gonna go and what order they were going to go. And when they drew their numbers, the order is, Mr. McHugh will go first, Mr. Davis will go second, Dr. Davis, I'm sorry, Jay Strunk will go third, and then will be Bill Thompson, and then will be Mr. Tremble. So that's the order of the five individuals. And let me just bring up my email here. We laid out the rules so that everybody has a clear understanding of how we're going to conduct this.
I think we're waiting on Bob to tell us the order that the... Oh, he did? Oh, I'm sorry. Then yes. What's that?
So essentially, what we're going to do is we're going to ask each candidate, each candidate will come in. Well, we'll just start as Mr. McHugh comes in and explain to him as he gets in.
Hey, Bob, while he's getting set up, do you want to go over the order for the board for questions?
I'm sorry, say again, please?
While Mr. McHugh is setting up, do you want to go over the order of the board to give questions? Remember the email you sent out earlier? It had our list of person?
I do. Trying to find it. There was a list, there was 11 to 15 emails in the Google, and trying to find which one that was.
I know it was you were last, Al was second to last, I was third.
There it is. I found the email. All right, basically, the procedure is this. Each board member is going to have the opportunity to ask each candidate up to three questions. And that'll depend on how the questioning goes. Normally, it's two per person, but if we need to have a third, then we can do that. So what that basically means is each individual, each candidate will be asked 14 to 21 questions, something on that order. Each member will ask one question, then the next member will ask their question, and so on for each round. The order will be Dr. Nippert, Mr. Parker, Mr. Lappick, Ms. Grimm, Ms. Custer, Mr. Leach, and then myself. Deliberations will be public. It will not be executive session. The board will vote until we get a four-vote majority on one of the candidates. For the first round, candidates received zero votes will be dropped from the next round of voting. After that, candidates receive one vote will be dropped from the next round of voting. In the event of a 3-2-2 tie, tie, and a deadlock, we may choose to bring in the three remaining candidates one at a time for one additional... From each board member, if we think that will help to move anyone's vote. So that's basically the ground rules, and how we're gonna proceed. So if there's no additional questions, we'll move on from here. Go ahead.
I do have a question. Did the prospective candidates hear the comment from the floor? So the comment from the floor was a question. Do they know that... Do they know that that question was asked?
Public comment is public comment. It's not Q and A.
So they heard it?
No.
They did not hear it?
They did not hear it.
Okay, cuz that, you know, since I go first, that, I think, in fairness to the comment, they ought to at least hear that, and then they'll be allowed to address that.
Any board member is free to incorporate as much or as little of that question or that comment as they wish, as one or as one of their questions, should they choose. Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
All right?
Okay.
All right. So, Mr. McHugh, are you ready to go?
I am, as long as everybody can hear me.
Well, I'll speak for myself. I can hear you, both live and through the screen.
Perfect.
Mr. Parker, can you hear Mr. McHugh all right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're most remote individual, so I think that if you can hear him, then I think everybody else should be able to as well. All right, what I'd like to do is, the only thing that I didn't address there is that each individual will have an opportunity to make a short opening statement, basically outlining pretty much anything that you would like to say that may address, you know, why you're running for the board, or why you chose to put in an application, pretty much anything you wish. When I say short, obviously, I mean less than five minutes, but it doesn't have to take full five minutes. It can be two minutes, it can be three minutes, or any length. But just, please don't, you know, extend beyond five. And you can start anytime.
Just wanted to make sure. Yeah, so for those that don't know me, my name is Jason McHugh. I'm a resident here at Potts Grove. Been here for 19 years. My wife, she's been here for, don't wanna give away her age, but let's just say all but one year of her life. We've got three kids that currently go to school in the district. I've got a couple of nieces that go to school here in the district, one that recently graduated. My wife is a teacher in this district. She's been teaching special education since 2000. So she's been employed by the district for quite a while, working in both the high school initially and now in the middle school. From a personal standpoint, what do you call it? I've got a Bachelor of Science in computer science and mathematics. I've got a technical job right now. I'm a technical sales engineer, so I'm very sales-oriented, but I know the ins and outs of the technology of the solution we sell. Previously, my job entailed a lot of travel, so as I posted in an earlier Facebook comment for anybody that was curious, I haven't been as engaged as I'd like to been over the years, just because I'm never home, or I was never home, I should say. I switched jobs in February with the sole intent of less travel. And with that less travel, obviously, I want to be more engaged. I always liked to volunteer when my kids were younger. I coached soccer, I coached lacrosse. Soccer, I think I did for all three of my kids, up until the point where they had to start doing weeknight practices, and I just was never home, so I couldn't. So my engagement has been minimal up until recently. I want to be more active, I want to be more engaged, I want to be part of the community. When this opening came up, I said right away, I wanted to put my name into it. And even if I don't make it here tonight, I plan to run in the fall, or next year, I guess, when everything goes on, and just give more back to the community.
Very good, thank you. Thanks very much. With that, we'd like to go ahead and get our questioning started with Mr. Parker. I'm sorry, Dr. Nippert.
Okay.
Now, I gotta say, before you start, I can't hear you. I can, I'm only hearing it through Bob's speaker.
Hello, can you hear me now?
It's an issue on this end. I don't have any volume, so everybody else turn things down. I didn't know if there was pumping through here, but I don't want to sit here and try to hear.
I sound like the guy in the old A and T commercial. Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Oh.
I didn't want to touch any buttons on this laptop, you know, since it's gotta get wiped down between users, so I guess I just need to turn the volume up.
Raising my voice doesn't do much good when there's no volume control. Sorry. Let me begin with a question, let me begin with a question that I think is gonna be on everybody's mind tonight. You know, we had a controversial vote at the last meeting, and if you had been present, how would you have voted for either the virtual, or the the online, or the hybrid?
Right, right. No, that's a good question. Actually, I even made a comment earlier today. I'd be surprised if I was gonna be asked this because I don't think I had quite all the information as general public, as US board members have. I don't know the classroom to custodian ratio, what level of effort it would take to clean and sanitize the room between classes and between days. I didn't know what kind of door openings and entrances and exits the kids would have. There was just high-level information. So I don't feel that I have as complete a picture as what US board members would have had. But I can tell you from my preference, when I filled out the parent form, and I don't even think my wife agreed with me completely, but I chose hybrid for all three of my kids, thinking that between the school board and the administration, you guys did your due diligence, were confident enough that you were able to mitigate risk. And for those that voted fully virtual, like I said, I just made assumptions that there was additional details around how the sanitation and how the controls were gonna be put in place to mitigate risk that maybe us as the public didn't know about. But personally, going by the information I had, I would have voted hybrid.
Okay, question number two. Presumably, this is going to end, and I'm looking at the other end of the telescope at this point. If you think about a reasonable time for us to go back to full green, it may be as late as March, which means our kids will have gone for nearly a year without face-to-face classes. What problems do you think might arise as we transition back when this disease ends? And what steps do you think we ought to be, we ought to do now to prepare for the transition? Because hopefully, this is going to end someday.
Right, and it'll absolutely end one of these days. I'm hoping, knock on wood, that it's the school year. So the biggest concern I would have is the levels of education that the kids who are all virtual are getting. You've got some kids that will gravitate to it, that work well independently, even though it's synchronous teaching. I understand there's gonna be teachers on the other end of the screen here. But I work in sales. I'm used to face-to-face, and I tell you, I've been doing Zoom meetings since March. It's not the same. Some people are okay with it, some people can get by, some people struggle. And there's going to be people that struggle throughout this. There's gonna be certain demographics that just don't have the proper internet access to get on school synchronously, day in, day out. There's gonna be personal issues to where they can't, for one reason or another, get online at the certain times. So the biggest struggle we're gonna have as a district, when we transition back, is getting the student population where they need to be at a per-grade level and a per-course, you know, mathematics, language arts and such, and getting them back to a level playing field. And I think we've got to start thinking about that now. We've got to start planning right away, because there's gonna be kids that are gonna fall behind within, I don't want to say days, but within weeks of school starting, and we've got to have plans to mitigate that.
What do you think you would bring to the table to help us?
Hold on, hold on, just a second. I think we really ought to go to Mr. Parker. I'm considering that first question a hyphenated or a part A, part B question, but before we go to question two, we really ought to go to Mr. Parker.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right. Well, actually, I think my first question might have been Chuck's second question, so I might cover you, Chuck. What do you see the role of the school board member as being? What is their role?
I feel that the role is to weigh the options of what's going on between the administration and what the, I don't want to say parent population, but the population of Potts Grove as a whole wants to see in the school district and be in that voice of reason. I mentioned, I might not have mentioned this in my letter of intent, but I know I posted something earlier today saying, my role is to bring a balanced view of what's going on here. There's a lot of different personality types. I personally don't know the eight of you, but between the nine people that are ultimately gonna make up this board, we've got to cohesively come up with a way to keep the school district moving in a positive direction, especially against adversities like this, because there's always going to be something. A few years ago, it was when we transitioned to centers, was the last big uproar, I recall, here as a school district. We had a nice little lull, huge drop-off in parents and members attending the board meetings, and then this came up, and it's cycled again. And it's gonna constantly be cyclical, and it's us as board members to determine how to best handle that, listen to the concerns of the population in the community, and take the appropriate actions based upon what we hear. It's not just gonna be what our opinions are, it's gonna be what the opinions of the population in the community as a whole, and making sure that we're making the right decisions with the information we have at hand.
Very good. All right, Mr. Lappick?
Hey, thank you. Mr. McHugh, thank you. Do you hear me okay, or?
Yep.
Okay, good, just making sure. Thank you for being here this evening. Every, every board director brings a different skill set to the table. I was just curious, if you have a particular work or volunteer experience that you feel will be most helpful to your role as a board director?
Well, like I said, with my work, I'm in an interesting position. I'm the technical sales manager, which means I work with sales execs day in and day out. They all have very strong personalities. They all think certain ways, and I have to learn how to interact with both their personalities on a day-in, day-out basis, as well as the clients and the prospects I'm talking to. So I deal with people... So I deal with people with different various educational levels, people who know a lot, people who know a little, and it's my job to not only educate and get people up to a certain level, but also communicate, well, in my job, the benefits of what I'm offering to them as a company. I feel I can transition that easy here to where I'm going to take the information, I'm going to gather all the details when there's an issue like this COVID thing, and everybody's getting details from the CDC, from the governor, from Montgomery County, taking that information, providing an analytical, logical view. That's where my mathematics degree comes in. I think very logically. I want to understand what the processes are. I want to come up with that right outcome based upon the information presented to me. So what I'm going to bring to it is just the logic and the level-headedness that says, okay, here's the information. I've got to think about the students. I've got to think about the teachers. I've got to think about the community as a whole. What's the best plan of action based upon the information received and how I parse that data appropriately? And not only what I think of it, but communicating it to the rest of the team so that they're in the same understanding that I am.
All right, thank you very much. That worked. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Grimm, your first question.
Well, welcome, Mr. McHugh. It's nice to meet you, and thank you for applying. The question I'll have for you, what do you like and dislike about the Pots Grove School District?
What do I like about the district?
And don't like.
And dislike, yeah. All right, I'll throw a little of each in. No, I do like the districts as a whole, at a very high level. I think it's a great district. I mean, you hired my wife right out of college. She's had a job ever since. It's great. She talked very highly of the district. I dated her when she was a senior here back in the day. I went to Boyer Town myself, so I'm an outcast. But no, seriously, what I like about the district, I think it's a well-run district. I think that from an educational standpoint, we are at a level playing field with the area districts and what we provide. We're unique in that we're a little bit smaller than the Springfords and the Boyer Towns and the Pottstown's, but still provide that same value to our students and the community as a whole. So I really do like the feel of the community and the fact that we do provide a good education for our kids. I've got three kids. I feel they're very intelligent. I feel they're getting a good education here. What I dislike? That's tough. I've never really thought about that as a whole. I have to think a little bit more on that, to be honest with you. I'm sure everybody's got their ups and downs. I never really thought about things that absolutely drive me crazy about this district, and I don't want to say that of being politically correct or trying to.
Well, it's good to hear that you didn't jump out and say something that you disliked. That's good.
Yeah, and I wish I could think of that, and I probably should have documented that ahead of time, coming in here and being a little more prepared, because that's a common question to ask, but I can't think of that off the top of my head. I apologize.
No, not at all. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mrs. Custer, your first question.
Oh, good. I can look over here.
There we go. So I think our board prides ourselves on being, not being a rubber stamp forth. There's many different views. There's many different opinions within the board, but we work well together. If an issue came up that you felt very strongly about and you lost the vote per se, how would you react to that?
If I was communicated the information and the views from the board, I would accept the vote, whatever the decision was, and move forward and do my best to implement whatever policy, procedure, thing that was voted against. I mean, that's the honest truth, is although I might gather the information together, I'm open to other views. We decided virtual. I let the family know. We're getting on board. Got my youngest a desk. Got a situation set up for the other kids, and we accept the decision that's been made, and we continue on with the next main issue that needs to be done. So I don't feel that I'm going to yell and scream and hold grudges. I feel that as long as I presented my views and my information appropriately, and it wasn't accepted, there was a reason for it, and I'm willing to accept whatever that reason was.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to be the next person. For me, my belief has always been the three most important roles of a school board director are your superintendent and how you work with them, your budget and your negotiating groups, and of course, the curriculum. So the first one I'm going to talk to you about is going to be how, in your opinion, is the role of the superintendent play with the school board, and how would you react with them?
I think that the school board has to learn closely with the superintendent. I think if you're going to be constantly butting heads, it's not going to solve anybody's problems, and it's not going to be good for the district as a whole. Hopefully, that between the eight, nine members here, that you guys do have a collaborative engagement with the superintendent on a regular basis. I don't know how often you guys do meet with the super and his team, but that's huge. I mean, you've got to work together. You don't want to be constantly battling each other. Similar to how the administration and the teachers union don't want to be battling each other. When you're constantly at each other's throats, things don't move forward. So I feel that it should be a coexistence between the two, that together you're better versus the board saying they know best or the administration saying they know best, similar to how the eight or nine of the board members have to work together to come with the common, you know, solution to a given issue, same deal place here where the superintendent and the school board need to work together collaboratively.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Now it's my turn. Thanks for your comments there. Want to touch on one thing you just said about teachers union. As you mentioned before, your wife's a teacher in the district, and you did have a question on this, and I know it's been a question several others' people's minds, and this does come up from time to time. With your wife in the union as a member of the bargaining unit, we've had this before, and it's actually relatively common to have a member, a board member with the wife either in the bargaining unit or in a bargaining unit of an adjacent district. Normally, what's done is on issues that are confidential, a member has to leave the room and has to recuse himself from votes that are, you know, of confidential nature and then not be in it. I'm assuming that wouldn't present any sort of a problem for you. Is that correct?
No, it's no problems for me. I mean, my biggest concern is when you get an even number of board members. Obviously, you have that chance for a tie, and it just could potentially stretch things out, but if that's the way things need to be, I'm fully understanding of that. One of my biggest concerns before I even submitted my letter of intent was, can I even do this with my wife being a teacher? And I had a couple of people come back saying that they don't see that as a problem, understanding that there are certain things that I may or may not be able to have a say in.
More specifically and to the point, there was a question. You mentioned your Facebook post, and I think you have it with you tonight. In there, there was a thing about, about looking out for your wife's best interest. Can you more specifically explain that statement and what you meant by that?
Yeah, so what I meant was, that was whole in the context of what I wrote. It was being level-headed, understanding that I have three children in the district, and I've got to look out for their best interest. I have my wife, who I have to look out for interest, and just like the rest of you, I'm a taxpayer here. I pay thousands and thousands of dollars in school taxes, and I've got to look out for the community's best interests. So taken out of context, yes, I could see how that could be a concern, but if you read the whole blurb, it was giving my kids the best education possible, focusing on my wife's best interests, I mean, and the teachers as a whole, and focusing on making sure our taxes don't get out of control, making sure the budgets stay maintained.
All right, that concludes the first round of questions, and we'll move back to Dr. Nipper for the start of round two. He's still muted. Dr. Nipper, would you care to start your next round of questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was muted.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, anyway, I want to start following up on what I was talking about earlier regarding the restart of of the school district in, in the future. I'd like you to elaborate. Your kids, as I recall, are stretched from elementary to high school.
Correct.
Yeah.
Eleventh and fifth, yes.
Fifth, okay. Describe the impact, and you had a fifth grader going through virtual education back this spring.
She was fourth at the time, yes.
But, okay. Don't rattle me. I'm easily rattled. But anyway, describe the impact on, on that kid as much as you care to when school shut down back in March, and how, how did you handle that? Because I think, I think about what would have happened in my case.
Yeah, I'll quickly highlight all three, and I'll focus on, when you wanted me to focus on my own under school kid, I'll go ahead and do that, but all in all, my kids did okay with the virtual learning, with the asynchronous learning, I should say. My oldest, I think he could have learned a little bit more. I think he did all right because the schools were adjusted appropriately and the curriculum was adjusted. My middle child, she did all right. She had an older brother who luckily went through everything, so he was able to provide her a lot of guidance and help with some of the courses. Now, my youngest, being a fourth grader, and she is a highly intelligent person. She's very acclimated to technology. She's had an iPad for as long as I can remember. Her transition to virtual from a scholastic standpoint was pretty easy. She would wake up in the morning. She'd grab her iPad. She'd do her work. She knew how to take pictures, submit her homework appropriately. She did very well, actually. We did have to sit with her about once or twice a week in the evenings after she had done her schoolwork for some of the nightly reviews and looking over her homework and helping her out. But luckily, my wife, who's a teacher, very helpful, and myself being home due to this whole virus, we were around to help. So I'm probably not the best example on what an elementary school could do, because I think my youngest did very well. I see how others could have struggled, but from a personal standpoint, my youngest did all right. Whether she learned a lot, it's hard to say. It's really hard to say if anybody learned a lot toward those last two months of class year with the asynchronous. I felt a lot of it was just enrichment, keeping up with what they had already learned. There were some tidbits of new information, but all in all, they got by without much problems at all, my three kids, especially my youngest.
Yeah, what, you mentioned your community involvement was not.
One.
Oh, am I done?
Right, yeah, we're good for now. If we need round three, we'll go to round three. Mr. Parker, please.
Yes, you answered most of the questions I had down. But my next question's kind of a three or four-parter. If you're appointed to the board at our next meeting, would you run in the next election? And if so, would the parents vote for you, and would the retired senior citizens in our community vote for you, and if so, why?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, and I have every intention of maintaining the seat should I get it. So I know that's in November of next year, and yeah, I will absolutely run. As far as the general public and the Pots Grove community voting for me, I think I have a positive impact on this. The people that do know me, I think very, think very highly of me. They understand my personality. They know how I operate. They know my way of thinking. And that's both for the community that has school-aged children, as well as, I think, the older community. I relate very well to the people around me. I listen to their concerns, and I come across easy to speak to, if you will. So people are able to talk to me, tell me what they want, tell me what they feel I need to hear, and I'm able to regurgitate that information, take it in with everybody else's, and provide my views and outputs based upon it. So yeah, I feel absolutely, for those that know me, would absolutely vote for me. For those that don't, I'd make sure that I would get known to the point where they'd be comfortable enough to allow me to maintain my seat here on the board.
All right, very good. That brings us to Mr. Lappic.
Hello again. You actually answered part of my question with your response to Mr. Parker's, but I was just curious, before I asked you about past experience that you have that would help as being on the board, is there particular qualities that you feel are required in order to be on the board?
I think if the board members are representations of the community, the quality would be that you really have to listen to the input of the community. I think the public comments that take place before and after every board meeting are very insightful, gives you an idea of what the community's thinking, but you have to go outside of that, because, as you know, we're a community of, you know, thousands of different parents of students here, but yet there's usually a small population that tends to be more vocal than others. So what you need to do as a board member is be able to, yes, take the input from those that are being vocal, that are passionate, that do want to stand up, but understand that they're just one piece of the larger community and really getting an understanding and a feel by being engaged in the community. And I think this board does a very good job of that. They go to the different school events. They get involved in the different classrooms. I know when my kids were younger, there was always a board member at some sporting event, some activity, some extracurricular club that was going on, and I think that's key, because you really need to get that insight of what's going on at all times, so that you can make the appropriate decisions based upon what the community has to say. Did I answer your question?
I did. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Jason, I just have, I was just thinking, my husband's a high school coach, and there's times when I have to abstain from certain situations because he's directly involved. Could you see yourself doing that, since your wife's a teacher? Would you be able to abstain from, from certain situations or voting?
If I had to, if there were certain conflicts to where I feel there was a conflict of interest, absolutely, I would abstain, and I wouldn't be upset about it at all, because I understand what needs to be done. I'd like to be involved. I'm going to be involved as much as possible, but it's going to be up to somebody other than myself to tell me where that line is drawn. Otherwise, if we start getting to a point where somebody else feels, hey, Jason could be included in this, and I feel like maybe I shouldn't, I'll let it be known. And likewise, if my wife's having conversations with the union that I shouldn't hear, or I don't want to hear secondhand, she's very good today about not telling me specific student names. I don't want to know about that. She gives me high level, oh, I had to deal with a certain issue today, or oh, I'm dealing with that, but we try to keep that separation of church and state, if you will. I don't want to hear the specifics about specific students, but I also want to hear about her day. It helps to communicate. And the same thing with the board. If there's issues that are going to be a conflict of interest, I will more than happy step aside, because I know that's the right thing to do.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that.
All right, my turn. So you were, you just mentioned yourself about how you see board members at, you know, activities and events and stuff like that. I don't know if you are aware, but many of us sit on other boards or represent our board in different organizations. I, for one, along with Bob and Patty, sit on the JOC, which is the Western Center Board. Chuck is our MCIU representative. Jim is on the Safety Committee, something like that. So when you think you're taking this, you know, applying for this position, and it's just, you're going, oh, it's two nights a month, you know, it's way more than that.
Right.
And are you willing to step in, you know, and then also, we do feel sometimes that, I mean, not only, it's not an obligation, but, you know, we feel like we do need to be out in the community more. And that's enjoyable, you know, we like that, but sometimes you get to a point, I mean, you can ask Al, he and his wife ran the the athletic. Yeah, the Booster Club for forever. These guys, I think they lived in this building, in these buildings. You know, but are you able to give that kind of time?
I think a year ago, the answer would have been wholeheartedly no. As I mentioned, I took this other job in February because I will be home more, and I will be able to devote more time. Five years ago, even if I had the job today that I had five, if I had it five years ago, I would have answered no, because my kids are a lot younger. My kids are older now, that at least the two high schoolers, they do their own thing. They've got jobs. My son will be off to college in no time. My ability to give.
Be involved more, to do more.
Is here now, and this is why I'm stepping in and wanting to be part of this. So yeah, not only do I be part of this board. But same time, I would love to hear what else they will, what the rest of the board are going to be doing and potentially. Taking on a lot of this, yeah.
Thank you.
And I'll be open, if my job changes in six months, and all of a sudden, they're sending me all across the US again, I'll be upfront and honest about that, and at that point, maybe I will, I shouldn't say maybe, if that's the case, I definitely would not run next year, and that would be the reason why.
Okay, thank you.
So, yep, I know. So we've already discussed a little bit about, and I remember, I'm going to ask the exact same questions for everybody, so that's why I'm going to do it. We've already talked about how you would have to possibly abstain or change yourself out or take yourself out of person. out or take yourself out of per se, a couple of things. But let's say we have the teacher negotiation contract, which will come up in a couple of years, right? You're gonna be needed to give direction. Whether or not you're allowed to vote or not may be a different thing, but the teacher union comes back to your negotiating group and says, we need a 2.5% increase across the board, all steps. They come to you and they say, we would like to have your direction. What would your direction be to your negotiating team?
So, if I got involved in that, assuming that, you know, everything's okay and I'm allowed to at least be involved in the conversations, I would want to hear all the input, I'd want to hear their understandings versus what we as a board determine the numbers are feasible, what's feasible as a board, what's feasible from our taxes and such. I think I would take a balanced view on that because even though my wife is a teacher and she might get a slight bump in salary and it's gonna help our health benefits, I've gotta look at what that does to my taxes, what that does to the community as a whole, what the community as a whole feels. So, it'll be difficult, I'm not gonna lie, because obviously, me being in this role is going to cause all the teachers to talk to my wife, to put a bug in my ear, and I'm gonna have to do my best to keep that separation in place. So, yeah, it's gonna be difficult. I think I can handle it, and I think I can handle it in a just and fair manner. I can't say for sure what ultimately is gonna happen from this until it does occur, but my wife and I don't always agree on everything, and this is gonna be one of those where we're just gonna have to say, I agree with this, you agree with that, I'm gonna go this direction because that's what the community feels is best.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks very much. That brings it back to me for the last question in the second round. We're going to be looking at a number of different things. What's gonna happen next, you know, Tuesday night, whoever we appoint is gonna be moving into the next round. You know, you mentioned that we're moving forward with the Virtual Academy and we're gonna start making the decisions that happen next, so the decisions are gonna start Tuesday. And we're gonna be looking at what we have to do with that, and there's gonna be a number of hard decisions that have to be made in regards to the budget, in regards to personnel and leadership changes that can be made going forth through the year. Interviews that have to be made and other decisions that have to be made and negotiations and personnel. How do you approach building consensus and sharing information with other members on the board? How do you, how do you look at how you're gonna start sharing and interacting with the other members of the board?
So, as far as sharing information, I would hope that we're all getting the same information initially when we're having these discussions on how to design the virtual classrooms, where the teachers are going to teach these classes from, what kind of resources are the teachers gonna need in order to teach appropriately. As far as me gathering information and dispersing it, hopefully, we've got our own internal discussion where we're getting this information at the same time. While at the same time, I hope that each one of us is doing our own individual research. So, for someone like myself, I start looking at, well, you know, I've got a friend in Indiana, his kid started school a week ago, how are they handling it? What processes are they doing? What are we seeing from other districts that are already starting? And yeah, taking that back, when the board members do meet, when we all, eight or nine meet up, here's what we've seen, I'd like to hear Al, what you have to say, I'd like to hear what you have to say, Bob, taking that information as a whole and making decisions around that. So, what I would expect is that we would all have the same initial set of information on what the administration's planning to do, but then us sharing amongst each other what we've seen, what we feel would work, what doesn't work, and then make our decisions accordingly.
Very good. Alright, so that brings us to the end of round two. What I would like to do now is sort of talk to the, just talk to the board. So that brings us to eight o'clock. That's the first of five candidates with two rounds of questions. Do we want to go with a third round of questions or do we, do, how do people feel with comfort with this first candidate? Do we want to move to the second candidate at this time, or do we want to ask a third round of questions for this candidate?
I'm, I'm fine with.
I'll start with the, in the same order. Dr. Nipper, what, what's your opinion? You're muted?
Yeah, I got, yeah. I, I gotta learn to click the little button when it has a line through it. But, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with this candidate.
Okay. Mr. Parker, your opinion?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay, Mr. Lappic?
I'm good with the questions I've been answered, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Graham?
Fine also.
Okay, Mr. Custer?
I'm fine.
Okay, Mr. Leach?
I have actually one more question. In all three parts, like I said, the curriculum is my, probably my passion in this school district, is probably curriculum and then athletics. We have done a lot with reviewing curriculum over the years and actually changing and creating plans to make sure we're constantly reviewing. I'd like to hear your thoughts on our current curriculum and then your thoughts on the tools we use to help the teachers and the school board in regards to the MAPS program and the ECR program.
Okay, so, at a high level, the curriculum, I think, has gotten a lot better over the last few years. I think, my personal opinion, once again, my mathematics background is when the school district took that whole everyday math thing years ago and tried to roll forward with it, I don't think it worked to quite the degree that it should have, and I think that a board made a good decision to adjust that curriculum and start transitioning back to the more traditional way of teaching mathematics, for example. So, I think that the board has done a very good job of understanding what curriculums are being taught elsewhere, what's working, what's not, reviewing the curriculum on a regular basis. I think the curriculum does very well, and as far as the resources being utilized to help teach the curriculum, I, I'm actually impressed. I think that we have better resources, technology. When I walk into these classrooms and see what these teachers have available to themselves and to provide for their students is amazing. What we're doing as far as getting electronic devices to the kids to be able to teach, consist, providing consistency with Schoology across the board, I, I think that the administration of the school board, I don't know who made the ultimate decisions on this, has done a very good job over the years while maintaining, you know, the taxes that we pay and what it's costing to front all of this technology and all this learning curriculum. Now, as far as the specifics of the curriculum, I'll be honest with you, I'm not up to date on that. I know I have conversations with my wife, she's special ed, so all the curriculum that we do on a regular basis for our students, unfortunately, she doesn't have to, not that she doesn't have to, she can't follow any of that, she has to kind of essentially design her own. So, I don't have quite the insight on the curriculum other than seeing what my kids go through day in and day out with their schoolwork.
Alright, Mr. Hugh, thank you very much for coming in today, we appreciate, appreciate all your answers, and if you'll just step back, Mr. Parker will take you back and she'll sort you out and you can just sit back. And I think that in the past, what we've done is we've allowed them to put their computer back on, you can listen to the other folks go through their grueling interviews and enjoy their discomfort and listen to how they do, and we'll let you know at the end how it goes.
Great, appreciate your very time, thank you.
No worries.
Thank you.
This time we'll bring you, we'll bring you Dr. Davis in.
I feel like we've called in a witness to the witness stand that we need to swear in that question.
How are you?
I'm wearing it off.
Alright, Dr. Davis, thank you very much for coming and joining us this evening. Thank you very much for your application, your letter of interest. We do appreciate you stepping forward to offer to join us, and thank you for coming in tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome, and I, I, I just want to say thank you for having me.
So, what we'd like to do, the process is relatively straightforward. Each of the seven board members here tonight will be asking you two questions, and up to three, we probably won't get that far. We're going to, each individual will ask you one question, we'll move to the next individual and so around with two rounds and maybe a third in some cases. You'll be allowed to basically have a, a brief opening statement, just to lay out whatever you want. You can talk on any subject you want, we ask you to keep it relatively short, two to five minutes, something like that, at which time we'll then start our questioning.
Okay.
Pretty much the only ground rules. So, you ready to go?
I am.
Alright, sir, maybe we can add your, add your layer.
Okay. Well, guys, I just want to thank you guys for having me in here to speak to you today and speak to the public. I think that, what I want to start with is a, one of my strengths that I would bring to the board would be that I have a variety of experiences in my professional life, both in education and outside of education. I bring that perspective of being a teacher, also being an administrator. I'm a parent of three children in the districts, will be, they're in school now, will be in the school for the next 16 years, and I've also been a journalist, so I have the experience of working in the, in the professional world outside of education, and I think all three of those things really matter. So I just want to put all that out there at the beginning, just, just kind of know where, where I, I come from with my answers.
Alright, very good, thank you much, Dr. Davis. So, the first questions from Dr. Nipper to Dr. Davis.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can, yes.
Oh, good, Dr. Davis. I want to thank you, again, thank you for your application and thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for the brevity of your remarks because I too am an academic, I work at University at Widener, and when a professor is asked to speak, his first response is how many hours? So, I'm glad for the brevity of your remarks. Let me ask a question that is on everybody's mind. Eventually, this COVID crisis will end, and thinking about projecting to a potential end date, a potential end date for talking purposes might be March, which means our kids will have been away from face-to-face education for a year. Now, my question is this, what problems do you foresee when the inevitable happens and they have to open up? And what steps should we be taking and should we think of being, think of taking? Because we're not likely to have to do a lot right now, but what kind of planning do we have to do to, when we open up and return to a non-virtual world?
Well, I think the biggest issue that our kids will face is the behavior in the classroom because they're used to being at home, a little more unsupervised in environments. They will be often, if they're on Zoom, if it's a synchronous session, they're still often on mute, and so if they say a few words to someone in the house, it's not being heard, but obviously in the classroom, everything you say is heard and can be a distraction. So, I think behavior of our students and classroom management for our teachers will be the, the biggest struggle when they come back. And so, I think that having some social, emotional learning in the curriculum when they, when they do come back will be a benefit to kind of reteach our students how they should act in the classroom, what the expectations are, and, and kind of get them hitting the ground running in that, in that aspect so that we don't have discipline issues within the schools. Hopefully, they, they've had, while it's not in-person one instruction, hopefully, they've had plenty of synchronous sessions during this, during the upcoming school year. I know they didn't, did not have that in the spring, but if they have that in the upcoming months, then they at least have had, had that instruction, so academically, they should not be too far behind where we expect them. But, that, that behavior piece is an important one. The expectations of what, how, how they should act in the class and how they should interact with each other is, is an important one that we definitely need to be prepared for.
Okay, thank you.
What do you see the role of a school board member being?
School board members are, in a lot of ways, face the school. You, wherever you go, you represent the district. And so, you know, for example, there was a story just recently about a board member from Interboro that got herself in some trouble with her interactions during a rally a few months back. And so, you need to be cognizant of the fact that when you're a school director, everything you say and do in public, whether it's in a meeting or elsewhere, is a reflection on this district, and so you always need to be on your best behavior and representing this district with pride and show them what Potsgrove's all about, and it shouldn't be about what the Interboro lady had, had going on that day. So, we need to make sure that we are representing the district well. It's also important that we are knowledgeable about how districts are run so we can make the correct decisions when we are trying to approve different things within, within the district. We need to understand human resources and understand the finance aspect of, of schools and community, community relations, and those are all important aspects that don't go in the classroom, but they are important parts of the, of the district. And to that point, I just want to point out that when I had my superintendent internship through Drexel, I did have internships in all three of those areas, so I am knowledgeable of those areas, and I could bring that to the board if, if selected.
Okay, good. Mr. Lappic?
Hello, and thank you for being here this evening. You've got quite a varied experience, teacher, administrator, journalist. Is there a single job or, you know, work experience or voluntary experience that you feel will be most helpful to you in your role as a board director?
I think the most helpful one would be my, my time as an administrator, because as, this is a principal at, at a middle school, I had a big hand in developing teachers and working the curriculum and the classroom instruction and student achievement and teach morale and community relations, dealing with parents, you know, helping them out when they have issues, and all these things that are, that go on with, with the district, I, I had, I had a hand in that stuff. And so that, those give me experiences that I, that I can bring. So, when a parent has a concern, they bring to a board meeting, hopefully, I've already seen that and I've already dealt with that, so I can, I can kind of, kind of look where they're coming from and hopefully have a solution that they, they're going to, they're going to like to that, to that problem. Obviously, as a teacher, I learn a lot, a lot that I, that I, that I could use on the board and, and journalism as well, the communication skills and, and if it goes in the journalism, but I think that time as, as a principal at, at the middle school was really a, a big, big help.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, Mel, welcome, Dr. Davis, how are you today?
I'm well, yourself?
I'm doing good. Question for you, first, thank you for inquiring and filing an application, appreciate that. What do you like and dislike about Potsgrove School District?
I think the one thing I, I like the most about Potsgrove is, is the passion that the stakeholders in this district have. I know a lot of the teachers, administrators in the district, and they are very capable, passionate educators. Just watched the, the school meetings over the summer and I can see the passion that all of you as board directors have for this district, and certainly the passion the public has for the district. And the passion can come out in, in positive and negative ways. Obviously, what you've been doing for the summer is a critical but a very difficult decision, whether we reopen the school or not, and it was a decision that no matter what choice you made, not really was, would be happy with. So you're gonna, you're gonna get some, feel passion on both ends of that, and so I, I love the passion this district has and the pride people have with, with Potsgrove School Districts. As far as what I don't like, I think, if you know my, I want to change that phrase a little bit, I, I don't want to use don't like because I don't like, I don't want to be quoted saying I don't like anything about the district, but I will say that two major areas of opportunity, opportunity for growth in the district, one is curriculum. But I will say that two major areas of opportunity, opportunity for growth in the district, one is curriculum. I think we can continue to work on the curriculum and improve that for our students. And the other is increase the rigor. Not saying we don't have rigor right now, but if you look at some of the surrounding districts, I do think that their rigor is a little stronger than ours, and I think it's an area that we could improve on.
Well, thank you for that.
All right, it's my turn. Okay, how are you today?
Well, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, so my question to you is, we don't consider ourselves a rubber stamp board. We don't just vote how we're being told to vote. There's a lot of different opinions, points of view, beliefs, all that stuff, which can sometimes cause votes to go a little awry. If you had something you were voting on that you were fairly passionate about, and it didn't go your way, how would you react?
I think the important thing with any team is that you have a respectful, passionate discussion. Differences can help a team improve and go to new heights. But at the end of the day, when you are a team, you need to support the final decision. So whether or not I agree with the decision that the board makes, I would 100% support it once the decision is made. So if I did not like the decision, if I didn't agree with it, once we voted and we voted a certain way, I would never say anything against it publicly, privately. I would support it, because as a team member, that's how I need to actually, to the betterment of the team.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to go next. In my belief, the three most important roles of the school director are selecting and working with the superintendent, the budget, and how you work with your negotiating groups, and three curriculum. Now, I'm going to take these out of order from what I did last time, because you brought up curriculum and rigor. I'd like you to actually elaborate more on what you think as the areas of rigor that we need to improve on, and if you can include maybe some of the tools that we're currently using, like maps and such, and your thoughts on that.
Okay. I do know some people who have taught in both here and Springfield, for example, and I have been told by them that the students there, when they reach, by the time they reach the middle school, are at a higher level in seventh grade than they are here in eighth grade. And we are teaching to our state standards, and we are doing what is expected of us. But they're taken to a new level, and they have more kids that are advanced because of that. They have more kids that are taking AP classes and getting those college credits before they even get to the college, which helps them not only get in, but also helps their parents save some tuition money when they get to the college. So I think that the main areas are the ELA and math, the two main cores, because those can kind of branch out to everything else. But now that we're doing a bad job, because we're not, we're doing a good job in there, but we can do better, because we've seen it done better at neighboring schools. I think the solution would be to actually speak with Springfield or other neighboring schools to find out what they are doing. And I think that's a great practice for any administrator to talk to neighboring schools, and what are they doing that we can do better? And that can be any schooling area. And I think me being, working at another district, I can also bring that perspective here. So for example, when my school district had the board meeting last night to decide on if we're going virtual or not, the superintendent brought in a doctor from University of Penn to give his perspective medically why we should go virtual. And the staff and the parents, they all really appreciated, and they mentioned the meeting, how they appreciated having that perspective, having him there. So you hear from an actual expert on the situation, as opposed to just the opinions of anybody in the district that may or may not have an educated opinion. And while we all have our opinions and issues shared, having that educated opinion really does help. So it's those kind of things that we need to be looking for in other districts. So for us here, it's about pushing them a little more in the elementary level to raise expectations for them. And I guess the biggest difference is we need to expect more out of our students and not accept the minimums they want to do, but try to go above and beyond that.
Thank you. Very good. All right, that brings the background to me for my comments, and I do appreciate all the questions we've had so far. I wanted to pick up on a question that Sister Custer had and a comment that you responded to her about on the question about if something doesn't go your way and all that. One of the things that we've been trying very hard over the past couple of years with is just that thing, the collegiality and also the transparency. What that has done is it's meant that we don't often, we rarely, in fact, have any real discussions outside of board meetings. We're fairly absolutist about the sunshine law. And so it can be fairly awkward in our meetings. We're talking things out in the board meetings the way the sunshine law intends, and we're saying things in the board meetings. And it can lead to awkward pauses, and people don't know quite how to say things, because it's the first time we're saying them, and searching for the right words and trying to get the ideas across and trying to say things. And transparency is hard. Transparency is awkward. And we want to do that, or we want to be respectful, and we want to make sure that everything happens. But we also want to be collegial and respectful. And, you know, Tuesday was, Tuesday was very hard. Tuesday was a hard day for all of us. And yet, the decision was made, and we're all marching forward in that direction. We're going to keep going, and that's how it works. And you know, anybody who watched Tuesday knows that at the end of the meeting, I failed. I did fail. I lost it a little bit with Mr. Parker. I have since apologized to him in private, and I'd like to do that now in public. I had a moment with a lack of grace, and we talked about it. And it doesn't happen perfectly. It doesn't happen perfectly. We do our best. So my question to you is, is, I'm hoping that that is the spirit with which you will join the board, and just looking for, how do you normally work in groups and in teams? I'm not asking for, you know, I don't do things like oaths and promises and commitments and that kind of thing. I'm asking for, what is your general attitude? How do you work in committees? How do you work in teams? How do you, what is your approach?
Well, I can tell you, for example, when I was at the middle school, we had, I was one of three administrators, and in our leadership meetings every, one day, there was actually eight of us in the room that had meetings met together. And there were often times that I definitely had a different opinion than someone else in the room. And just like you guys are passionate about Pots Grove, and that passion came out on Tuesday, you know, we were all, ourselves passionate as well about that middle school. And it is, and it can be difficult sometimes to contain that passion. But one thing I've always told myself when I was this principal was that I am representing the district, whether I was in a private meeting or not. I am a professional, and I need to portray myself as such. And so if there's a time when my passion got the best of me and I couldn't act the way I expect myself to act, like you just did, I would have that reflection and make an amends, if you will. But the way I act in a team is, again, you want to have those opinions, you want to share those opinions, you want to make that team the best that you can make it. And certainly, that's the way I always acted in my, in my job as this is principal. I want to come prepared, have my research done, know what I'm talking about, so that I can give facts and research-based opinions. But at the end of the day, it's about working together as a team. I played sports throughout my childhood, and whether it was football, basketball, or baseball, the team has always drilled into me. It's not about one person, it's about the team. And so I always tried to take that into my professional life as well. Whatever I do, I want to make sure I'm doing it for the betterment of the team. And if I fail in that way, I want to admit my mistake and move on and learn from it, and try to avoid making a mistake more than one time. So if I became a member of the board, I certainly, in those discussions, I obviously love transparency, you know, honest communication is critical. The public needs to know what's going on, needs to know what we're thinking. So having those discussions, having, you know, good discussions is great, but we do need to make sure that once a decision is made, that we are all supporting that decision after the vote is done. And that's the way I would certainly act if I was a member of the board.
Okay, very good. That brings us to the end of round one. We'll start again with Dr. Nippert, if he'll take off his mute. He already has, so we're ahead of the game.
Yeah, I, you know, and I just want to second Mr. Lindgren's earlier remarks, because I've served on many groups and many bodies. I've been an academic. And a colleague of mine died recently, and I said, we spent 30 years happily hitting each other over the heads with four-by-fours, because we'd go into meetings and we'd have a disagreement. But one of the point I want to make here is this has been the most collegial group I have ever worked on. And I've been an engineer, you know, I've been an engineer for more than 50 years. I've worked with lots of people. This group is, we don't always agree. You know, we saw, you saw us literally at our worst on Tuesday night, but we came back together fairly quickly. And I think that's one of the things. And just to give this a question, there was a fairly contentious vote Tuesday night. And I don't want to go over it, but you're obviously aware, the school board voted to go virtual, as opposed to a hybrid setup. The question was asked earlier, which you don't know about, but it was asked by somebody, and I think it's a deserved question. How would you have voted Tuesday night?
That is a very difficult question to answer, in terms of, you know, how one should vote. Like I mentioned earlier, it is a decision, no matter which way I leaned and voted, that I would make people in this community quite unhappy, while others would celebrate that decision. If I was in the board Tuesday night, I would have voted to go virtual. And the reason for that is, while we obviously need to educate our students, the health and safety of our students and our staff should be our top priority. If the, if the school is not safe in any way, we need to take action to fix that. When schools started heading, sort of having issues with guns and intruders, they started having the shooter drills. You know, schools always react to what they need to keep our students safe, and this is no different. You know, in a sense, they were trying to keep them safe. And the good, dedicated teachers in this district and administrators, I have faith that they're going to find a way to still educate our students in a virtual way. And I understand there's parents out there who think, feel, I mean, that they need, their students need the interaction with their friends for, to keep for their mental health. But I will contend that even if they were in school hybrid, with the rules that we need to follow, of the mask-wearing, the sex feed, and all these other things, that that's not going to be the fix that they need for them being home so long, because they're not going to be able to hug their friends and play from their playground like they are used to. And what happens to mental health, that one of their classmates was to die, or they took, or they caught COVID, to go home with one of their parents or grandparents, and they died. So those are things that we need to consider, and I felt that when the North Towns superintendent made his statements recently that they didn't want to be responsible for one life of a student or a staff member, I thought that was a very important statement. And so for those reasons, I would have voted to go virtual. If the vote had gone to go hybrid, I would support that after that vote was made, but my vote would have been for virtual.
Thank you.
Okay, so my question is a three-parter. If you were appointed to the board seat at our next meeting, would you run in the next election? And if you did, would the taxpayers vote for you, and would the parents of our students vote for you? And if so, why?
Well, that is my current plan, would be to run again. Obviously, a lot will happen between now and the next election. You know, we're over a year away still. And so I would hope that certainly the committee would be happy with my performance on the board and happy with my decisions, in the way I voted and what I brought to the board. And so I'm hopeful that because of those reasons, they would vote for me to come back. At the same time, I'm hoping that I would enjoy my time on the board. I want to be on the board, because I want to serve the community, and I want, I'm dedicated to public education, and I want to make my kids' district better. I want to help. So I believe that I still would run come November, but without being able to predict how my experience would go, I can't make a guarantee that I would run. But certainly, my intent right now would be to run again, yes.
All right, Mr. Labic. And hello again. Earlier, I'd asked you about past experience, having been helpful to you as a board member. What are the qualities that you see as being most important and helpful as a board member?
I think the most important qualities, prior to the top two, will be, one is you need to be an active listener slash good communicator. When the board has the discussions, you need to, while you may come in with a, what you think is your decision, you need to be able to listen and have a conversation, because someone may change your mind. They may point out something that you hadn't thought of. And I believe a board member talked about that on Tuesday, that they had intended at one point to vote one way, and then they changed their mind to go the other. So it, you know, that open mind, open-mindedness, ability to listen and communicate is critical. And I think the other is being a hard worker and a quick learner, because being a member of the board is quite a commitment. It is, it takes a lot of time. There's a lot of work that goes into being an educated board member. And who joins the board is going to have a learning curve. So being able to learn quickly on the fly and having that work ethic to put the time into the district that is required, I think is also critical.
Okay, thank you very much. Good answers. Thank you.
Dr. Davis, what is your greatest achievement?
I think because you're asking me right now, the most recent achievement is my greatest. I defended my dissertation in May, so I'm still kind of blowing over the doctor part of my name right now. And that was, that took years, and it was a lot of hard work. And so I think right now, my answer would be that, really, my doctorate is my greatest achievement at this point.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Obviously, in my personal life, I take, most pride in my family. I love my wife, my three kids, and everything I do with them is to be, you know, of utmost importance. But as far as my actual achievements professionally, it is the doctorate.
Well, thank you for that.
Yep.
Can you get me now? All right, um, since you are an educator, you are probably aware that the board members aren't just in here twice a month. That many of us are on different boards, committees, that's what I forgot to bring up the last time. We're all on different committees. Will you have the time to devote to that, to possibly sit on yet another board, to sit on or possibly chair another committee or two? We're all on usually at least two committees if we have time.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked the question. I definitely would. Over the last eight years, I've been a full-time graduate. Over the last eight years, I've been a full-time grad student, working on two masters and then the doctorate. I've worked full-time and my wife and I have, I had three kids. We're now two, four, and seven. So it's been obviously learning how to be a parent and everything that goes on with the little kids. So it's been very busy, very hectic in my life for the last eight years. So when I started telling people about my successful dissertation defense and that the end was finally coming. After congratulations, the next thing almost every single person said to me was, what are you going to do with all your free time now? And they were always joking, but also kind of serious, like that was a lot of time that I spent that I now have free. And I wanted to use that time to give back to my community. And so I thought about how I could do that. And being on the school board, something I've always wanted to do, and was something I thought would be a way for me to give back. Obviously, the time back in May, I thought I'd be running for that next year. But then this opportunity arose now to do immediately, so all that time that I spent working on my dissertation and working on my grad school, I now have that time to devote to being on the board and being on those committees. And as you said, I actually didn't know that from being an educator. During my time of my superintendent internship, I went to a lot of board meetings. To me, the whole meetings and education meetings and policy meetings and, you know, the business meetings and so I've been to all those kinds of meetings in my district and seen them all and I've seen how busy the board members are, seeing them at so many different school events, you know, whether it's going to football games or the, or the school play or, you know, any of those kinds of things that are going to have our students to show the public that I care about our students. So I will be at public events and I will be at, you know, and I'll definitely want to be on committees and pretty part of all those meetings. Because it's still a critical component of being a school board director.
Thank you very much.
All right, so when we discussed earlier, I said the three parts, the curriculum superintendent and of course budget. You already discussed the curriculum, so I'm going to go with the first one, which is superintendent. In your opinion, what is the role of the superintendent in working with the school board directly?
So I just mentioned that I had a superintendent internship. And so in talking with my superintendent in my current districts, we had plenty of discussions about her interaction with the school board. Superintendents and the school board need to be a team. They need to be on the same page as often as possible so that we can keep the decision moving forward. And so there's times that we're not going to always agree. But and hopefully, you mentioned part of jobs of hiring superintendent, so when we get to that point down the road, when Dr. Shirk is done. We need to make sure that we find a superintendent that has the same goals and values as our district does, as we do, so that we can be on the same page as often as possible.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just going to pick up there right from where Mr. Leach left off. And that has to do with, he was talking about the three parts of what his, his goals were. And the part that he didn't mention then was, was the budget. We're going to have significant issues with our budget coming up in the near future. Dealing with how we're responding to, to this, this COVID thing with all the issues. So we're going to have, like I said, lots of, we were coming off a number of years with low and no tax increases, as you're probably well aware. I don't see how we can go forward from here doing that same thing. So there's going to be some difficult decisions coming down the road. Where, where are your priorities? How will you take those difficult decisions? What are your priorities? What are your non-negotiable things? Where are you going to look to cut? How are you going to approach those difficult decisions in terms of personnel programs and tax increases? What's your balance? What's your priority set?
My priority is we need to make sure anything that we deem is critical for our students' academic achievement. And there are certain things like transportation costs, because our students need busing that we have a hard time cutting back on because they live where they live and there's nothing you can do about those costs. And there's things like, my district at one point tried to cut back on their on the budget for substitute teachers. But the problem they learned quickly is you can't really change that because the teacher's out, they're out. And so you can't leave the one tenant, so while you want to, in theory, cut that cost, that's, that's one that is really difficult to cut because teachers have their days and and, and you can't just stop them from using a sick day when they're sick. So those are things that, places where I know to be able to try to go to cut, but it becomes difficult to make cuts in those areas. I hesitate to cut staff because you want to keep students in smaller classes and you want to give them options for the classes they take. And the more staff you cut, the less options they have for electives. The more students in their classes, which means the less attention a student gets from the teacher. And so I think cutting staff for me is probably the last item you go to. Because that has a direct effect on our student education. Studies have shown that the teacher has the, the largest impact on achievement. And while the other impacts, that is the largest, so we need to have that as close to as can as full capacity. Now, as you mentioned, sometimes you need to have hard cuts, and if we need to cut positions, because there's just no other way around it, then you know, as we have to do, but that to me is the, is the last place we look. Well, the last place we look is to raise taxes because we don't want to do that to our community if we help it. But as far as cuts go, the last cut I want to make is staff.
All right, very good. So I think that's our two rounds. So I will ask everybody real quickly, does anybody need a, want a third round? So really quickly, Dr. Nippert.
Yeah, I want to continue the questioning that we had a little while ago regarding time. One of the things that happens here is we talk about the number of meetings. But the number of time, amount of time the school director spends is sort of an accordion. It may expand. I mean, you know, the last several weeks, we put in a lot more than is normally expected of school directors. And my question is, how flexible is your schedule? And can something like the discussions about the programs comes up and we wind up meeting two or three times a week? Can your schedule accommodate that?
Yes, before I put my name into running for this, I did talk to my wife about the commitment, the time commitment that this, this takes. And she was completely on board with, with me going for this position and understanding of the time that it will, it will take from, from, from me. So as many nights as I needed, when we have, because you discuss, I can certainly make sure I'm here. I have no running appointments in the evening. I do like to try to get to my own districts where I work, the other, their board meetings and other things. But those are things that if I have to skip for a month because we have something going here, then I, then I skip it. So I, my schedule is very flexible in the evenings where I can, I can come any evening that is needed. I'm willing to be here and, and I don't, I don't have confidence that my wife will take care of things at home and, and when the kids really need to be run, so I might be very flexible.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Parker, do you have a third round of questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Labic?
I'm good as well, thank you.
Mrs. Lynn?
I'm good, thank you.
Mrs. Custer?
I'm fine.
Mr. Leach?
I'm good.
And I do not have a third round of questions, so Dr. Davis, thank you very much for joining us this evening. You're welcome to follow. I'm sorry, excuse me.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome to follow Mrs. Bickerd into the back room, and she will bring our next contestant forward, Mr. Shrunk. And we'll seat him and then we'll get started with our, our next interviewee to talk with him very quickly and put him through his, his opportunity.
You're leaving masks on.
If you're comfortable with it. If you're comfortable.
Thank you. No.
A little bit, obviously.
More than anything, I hear Jerry Garcia.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Just strangers have come up to me and tell me I look like Jerry Garcia. You brought this water for me?
Did somebody say he looks like Evan Brandt?
Who, who's Evan Brandt? I don't know the name.
He's a journalist.
Local reporter. Oh, journalists from Mercury.
All right, I think we're ready. Welcome, Mr. Shrunk.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Our pleasure. Thank you for submitting your letter and for your resume. We appreciate very, very much you putting your hat in the ring. And we're, we've looked it over and we're going to ask you some questions now. Basically, each individual is going to ask you two questions. And we're going to give you an opportunity to give a brief opening statement, and then we're going to get right into the questions. Questions can very much be on anything that the board has in mind. Your opening remarks likewise can be on anything that comes to mind, but we do ask that you keep them brief as we're trying to get out of here, you know, before midnight-ish. Other than that, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. And thank you for saying thanks for throwing your hat in the ring. The opening statement, let me just explain why I ended up throwing my hat in the ring and what I'm doing. I was born in Pottstown and grew up there, graduated from Pottstown High School. My wife and I moved to Delaware County in the early seventies. And my father died when he was quite young, was 59. So in 1981, I had a mother and a grandmother still living in Pottstown. And we agreed to come back and live as a multi-generational family. She didn't want to leave the Pottstown area, so my wife and I, it was in 1981, were looking for a school district because at the time, we had a two-year-old and a four-year-old. And the four-year-old would have been starting school, so we selected Potts Grove as the school district and had been living here since 1981. My two sons, as I said in the cover letter, graduated K through 12 in Potts Grove. Both of them still live in the district. One has four kids here in the district and the other has two, two grandkids. So they are in, there is one of them in lower, four of them in middle, and one, one in the high school. My older son, 12 years ago, my mother and grandmother passed away, as I said, multi-generational. Came back and asked if he could move into our multi-generational house on Briar Lane, if he enlarged the in-law quarters. So my wife and I have become the older generation. We live in the in-law quarters and we live with my older son, his wife, and their two sons. One in middle school and one in high school. We're both retired, and because of that, while we've tried to stay active in sports and other things, we also have been involved with the kids in Hello? Bit of consulting on this side, and I was working with Lehigh Valley Children's Centers at the, at the last year for much of the year on an interesting project. But at the end of the project, the president of the board asked me if I'd be interested in serving on the board. And I very much was, never thought about anything like that, but came back and talked with my wife there in Allentown. And I finally said to my wife, you know, I just don't want to do that. I don't feel like going to Allentown. If there was an opening on the board here, because we were involved with Potts Grove, I would do that. I would take that at a moment's notice. So it's both this combination of opportunity and desire combined with a skill set that I think could be helpful, could be complimentary to the board, depending on what you're looking for. With just a fairly long experience living in this area with, as I said, six grandkids and then my two sons, so eight altogether. Having been through or being part of the Potts Grove experience. So I was, my wife and I were looking at the Potts Grove calendar one day on the computer at home and up popped the opening for the board. And I just really said, you know, I really think, I really think I could contribute and enjoy being part of that and helping this district to continue to excel. So I hope that's not too long, but in a short period, that's what brought me here.
No, not too long at all. That's just fine. Thank you very much. That was a good overview. So Dr. Nippert, I see you're, you're live, so if you'd care to start your questioning, sir.
Okay, and thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Shrunk, for your introductory remarks, and thank you for your application. Again, we're very glad to, to consider it. Right now, you know, we're in the middle of the COVID crisis. And we are going to be going all virtual education. I expect that this is a temporary condition which will end sometime soon. A reasonable time would be, this might end, might be March. Which means that our kids will have gone without face-to-face schooling for a period of approximately a year. Maybe longer, maybe a little less. What problems do you see in that situation for the kids as they return to a normal education? And what do you think the role of the school board would be in looking down the road to that time? So please comment on that.
I think the problems may be different with the levels of education. I struggle conceptualizing what K through three virtual looks like without a strong parent monitor. And I think the issues that you would have there may be behavioral in nature, depending on how the parents handle the home situation. But would show themselves as disciplinary things, behavioral issues in the classroom. Getting kids to come together, especially younger kids in a large group, almost socialization and discipline. For the middle schools. I think it would be similar behavioral issues, re-socializing, re-acclimating. And again, so much is driven by the nature of the parenting skills that go on. But it would be middle school kids roping in freedom again. So getting them into their classrooms, getting them settled, getting them to follow disciplinary procedures or, or, you know, working with each other. I'm guessing less problems at the high school. And I only say that because I have the one grandson I live with is in high school. It would be socialization again, I think, getting people re-acclimated, getting them used to being a part of something larger. Rather than what the children will experience at home, will be much more individualistic in one or two. And I think that's a different social environment where I am the center of attention and the younger kids with the parent helping me. And then coming back into being part of 15 or part of 20. And again, relearning that collaboration skills. Mutual respect skills, communication skills in smaller groups, which will be missing. Yeah, so I, I think my hunch is that the problems will be less of an academic nature and more of a behavioral re-acclimation and socializing nature.
Thank you. The next question, what do you see is as the role of the school board member being? What would be your role?
I think it is having contact with the community because you serve the community, understanding the community you serve, understanding the opinions, the desires of the community for education. And then using the experience that you have collaboratively with the other board members, finding solutions to those educational issues to help in achieving the vision of the school. So it is both understanding the operation of the school, both in terms of curriculum and financial, but also understanding the expressed desires or needs of the community that you serve and helping the administration of the school and the teachers of the schools to find exemplary solutions that both meet the educational requirements being demanded at the federal and the state level, being desired at the community level and helping, helping the school find programs and processes to deliver that. And then, of course, the board provides oversight to the superintendent for those processes.
All right, thank you very much. Going on to the, the next question. Every, every person on the board brings a different skill set to it, which helps in our collaboration. Is there a, a single past work experience or volunteer experience that you feel will be the most helpful to you in your role as a board director?
My entire working life has been spent in human resources, training and development, or what is called organizational development, specifically with a focus on management development and leadership development. I think the work that I have done, and I spent 11 years in the educational system, eight with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit and three of those with the State Department of Education. But the work that I have done, both in education as well as in the corporate world, in developing others, especially managers and supervisors and leading groups who do that kind of work, overseeing people who are responsible for the development of others. Part of that work is, it's also called organizational development. It's looking at the effectiveness of the overall operation in the way the organization is structured and finding ways to, to strengthen that, the organizational operation of, of the, of the unit or of the business organization. So I think what I'd bring to the board is a good depth and breadth of knowledge in people development, in child development and in the development of managers and leaders. So if the board were looking for someone, as I see you have a curriculum committee, to be part of that curriculum committee and to potentially add even additional value, not to say that you don't have very, very bright people there, but to add additional value to a curriculum committee or a committee that is looking at the quality of leadership of the district, the quality of management and supervision that goes in at the district. I, I know that's important. Speaking to my sister last night, she was the head of a math department in a South Carolina school district. Her name is Jan, we're just talking to her about the role of the, of the department head in supervising the other teachers or the specialists. And while it's different than in the corporate world, it is very similar with those supervisory responsibilities. So I think I'd add value much, much more in that niche if, if that would be of value to the makeup you currently have on your board and what you're looking for.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr. Strunk. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, I'm always good. Yes, Patty, yes. One question I'll have for you, what do you like and dislike about the Potts Grove School District?
I like, specifically here, middle school and high school, the role of the teacher seems to be becoming much, much more of a mentor as opposed to just a purveyor of knowledge. And as you read even thought leaders in the future of education, there is a belief that in the next 10 years, education will become more individualized, more personalized, and that the teacher's role will become much more of a mentor, of a support. I take that back to when I was in school and teachers were authority figures. I see all six of my grandkids, or especially the ones in middle school and high school, because they have access to those Apple notebooks, communicating with their teachers at night from home and getting, getting messages back and getting help and being able to ask questions and do real time. So the quality of the relationships between the students and the teachers is really, in my opinion, commendable, at least as I see it from my 13-year-old grandson and my 15-year-old grandson and just see the work that they're doing. This ability to go real time and to see their grades and their averages and things like that. And the communication that goes on, they seem to be more than subject matter experts. They seem to be people who really care about kids and about the development of kids. And that is really evident as I get involved with my grandkids at home. My biggest dislike, this will sound tongue-in-cheek somewhat, but my biggest dislike is you don't have an ice hockey team. And we've worked hard, all three, my two sons and my three grandsons have played ice hockey since they've been five years old. And many of the school districts in the area, Buertown, of course, is the closest to have hockey teams, which they could play at the elementary level, but once you get into middle school or high school, you can't play for a neighboring school if your school doesn't have one. So the first, that was the first dislike that came to mind, if I could change anything. And you have enough players here to have, even if it was a club-level team, to have an ice hockey team, they're playing for the Valley Forge Colonials. What else do I dislike? I would have to think more, I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. That's fair.
Thing that came to mind. There's been nothing, I've done a lot of the driving of the kids back and forth to school and as I said, have been involved. I, both Denise and I have been exceptionally pleased with the quality of the education that the kids have gotten and with how well they're doing. Most of the kids are honor students, have not distinguished honor students here. I'm sorry.
That's nice to hear. That's nice to hear. So it's hockey, you're a big hockey fan?
Yes.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, next you get me. So we don't consider ourselves a rubber stamp board. We don't just sign off on anything that comes across. We do tend to have quite a bit of discussion about it and often very differing opinions, points of view, all that stuff. So if, because of that, you know, sometimes our votes aren't always even. But if something came up, you know, came across our desks that you were very passionate about and the vote did not turn out in your favor, how would you react to that?
Let me preface it by saying, both Denise and I watched the entire school board meeting on Tuesday, which is an example of votes not coming out in everyone's favor and some people changing their mind even during the meeting prior, prior to giving a vote. And it was quite interesting to watch that balance of how it's handled. What I try to do in my life, and I don't want to come off as if I'm perfect, to be respectfully collaborative, to understand other people's points of view, to understand that I'm not the brightest nut in the room, that there is equal thought leaders that are sitting in the room. And because they have a different point of view, doesn't mean they are wrong or that they are right. And a strong belief that I can improve myself by better understanding the points of view of others. To some degree, I think that was demonstrated on Tuesday with people and with comments I've seen since the meeting on Tuesday. I think there's, with some exemplary behavior that frankly, I wish I could exhibit too. The other part of that is having the courage to speak up, even if that is strongly or emotional. But to realize that my emotion is not aimed at a put-down or a dislike or criticism of another, but of an expression of disappointment and understanding. I mentioned hockey before, I'm a team manager for two of the teams. We get involved with parents a lot and with the operation at the rink and the rules that are set up. And with COVID now, you can imagine there's a lot of rules. Parents aren't allowed in the rink during practices, only coaches are allowed. And I get a lot of angry emails from parents who are demanding that we're paying money. Why shouldn't we be allowed in the rink? Because we could shut down the rink if we do that. And I think, and I try even as the team manager, to listen respectfully to those points of view, to reflect back those points of view, to show that I do understand. And to even thank them for, for their agreement or their disagreement. And specifically, you're saying at times when my point of view is not accepted. It's learning to be humble and yet be kind, to understand my principles, to understand the principles of others and to realize that the, the end result that we're looking for, which here is the continued greatness of the school district, was Bruce Springsteen who said once, "Nobody wins unless everybody wins." And we're in this, we're in this thing together. And sometimes my points of view get accepted and sometimes they don't, but you move on. And hopefully you move on stronger without grudges, without resistance. And that's learning to work together because we're working together for the betterment of something bigger than any one of us individually, if that makes sense. And it's not easy. I don't want to come across that's easy. It's something I've tried to do my entire life in disagreements where if you want to say win or lose. It's not, it's not a personal loss. It's, it's, it's the we who win with the direction that we go.
All right, well, thank you.
So I'm going to be next and, oh, wow. Give me a second here.
Can you hear them? Well, can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, because the only reason I put myself on mute is the feedback.
Yes, I, you're muted here too.
Hopefully, everybody can hear me out there. So when I always look at the role of the school board director, I look at three different particular items. I look at the superintendent, I look at the budget and the negotiating groups, and I look at the curriculum. And you had mentioned earlier that you think that you would like to be on the curriculum committee. And that's definitely a passion of myself and definitely of Ashley. Right, so I'd like to talk about that for a second. Right? What do you feel, what are your feelings on our current curriculum now? And how it could improve? And then how do you feel about the way we use some of our tools for our teachers like MAPS?
Tools for teachers like?
MAPS.
MAX, you said.
M A P. It's M A A P.
Oh, MAPS.
It's a computer tool that asks questions to our students to make sure that they're on level. And what, and it's real-time information so that we can make sure that teachers have exactly what level our students are on so that they can either improve or give them different areas so that we can then help the students on the standardized test and grow quicker in areas that they may be.
Selecting their subject matter. I can attest to be real, real close to it, to know the argument.
Can you unmute yourself? Can he be unmuted, please?
I've lost, I've lost the... I've lost Mr. Strunk.
Why we can't hear him talking, so I have to do them.
You guys can hear me?
Thank you. So a lot I could learn about the curriculum, as I was saying, I can't profess, I won't profess to be really close to it. I know that recently, my 13-year-old got a letter in the mail the other day from the district and came downstairs to our part of the house to show it to us. And he was selected to have a double math major next year in the middle school, algebra and geometry. And the letter went on to explain why they were doing that and how that might put him ahead. In fact, he'd be one year behind his brother, which is two years ahead of him, and where that would position him with college. One of the reasons for calling my sister last night, because she was a math major and the chairman of math department was talking to her about that and saying, does that, does that seem sensible? Does that seem like a good thing? And Jan said, well, that's really good thinking. Those two math classes, if you take two, if you were to take any two math classes together, those are the two they should have together because they feed off of each other. And she, she just thought that was just a good decision and a tremendous opportunity. His name is Zachary, for Zachary to do that. Zachary has very much of an analytical mind. The other pieces of the curriculum, and it's really not a part of the curriculum that I have seen, is this ability to do real-time, you know, talking with, with the teachers using the MAX. The MAPS I am not as familiar with. I apologize, I just don't know. And I could, I could ask the kids about that. I know I see the schedules of both of the boys each year. They have always seemed to be well-thought-out, well-planned and well-implemented with what they're doing. But the thinking behind it or the depth of thought behind it or where it goes, I just don't have that knowledge.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you even for whoever's doing that work with the double math thing. I mean, there's a 13-year-old who's really ahead of a lot of 13-year-olds.
Just a point of clarification real quick. It was double math with what were the two courses he was taking again?
Is someone asking me something?
Yeah. You're on mute.
Well, I'm not on mute, I turned down my volume, so it's, is that better?
I just took the speaker here too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't hear the question at all.
That's all right. I was asking what the two math courses were, you said double math.
It's algebra and geometry.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. All right, my, my question was, you know, I saw that you have... you know, I saw that you have throughout your career, you've been talking about, you've been doing the leadership and your background was in psychology and the numbers that you have in your career, PP and L and Pep Boys and all the different things you've done, huge numbers, very, very large budgets. And our budget is not like that. We're under a hundred million a year. But we're looking at some big holes in our budget coming up in the next year or two because of the COVID and because of some other issues that we're likely to have and looking at how we're going to fill them. We have a budgetary reserve and we have other things that we're going to do. So we're going to be looking at either tax increases or drawing down on the budget reserve or trying to, to look at other cuts in how we spend. Those are the, those are the options. Those are the options you always have, right? So the question is, what, what is the priority that you have? What, how would you balance those priorities? What, how would you look at those things? What's your background? What is your experience in those budgetary balancing act? And what are your priorities? How would you go about those things?
Budgets I've managed in the past, the priorities were different when we were trying to make up a shortfall. But typically in trying to balance that budget or come out on the plus side of the budget, it's really looking at the different options that I would have with that budget, looking at potential risk and reward with each of those options and making the soundest decisions that I can, that we can regarding which of those options are most likely to turn what we need with the, with the, with a reasonable amount of risk. I'm not sure it would necessarily be the least amount of risk. And I don't know, Bob, are you asking me specific for the options that you named?
No, it, it, well, everything's a judgment call, right? Because there, there's no real right answer. Because if we, you know, if you cut programs, then somebody's hurt with you do that. If you raise taxes, somebody's hurt if you do that. If you cut stacks, if you cut program or somebody's hurt no matter what you do. And it's balancing that and you got to figure out what you do. So the priority is, you know, how do you, how do you balance it? You know, which, which, which interest group do you hurt or which, which group do you prioritize? And the, the trick is trying to minimize. My, my trick, my goal has always been trying to minimize the pain to any of them.
Well, I know, and I know, I know the struggle. I have a nephew who's a opera singer. He was in the Buertown schools and Buertown has a very strong theater program. And my one granddaughter was involved in theater here for two years. And it's a much weaker program in terms of the funding and the support, not in terms of the hearts of the people that are doing it or the work that they do. And it was just always an interesting question even there and looking at why can Buertown spend so much for its theater program? And yet here there is so little in, in, in the arts. And I'm sure there's answers to that. I'm not saying that the decision was right or wrong. I know nothing about the details behind the decision. But sooner or later, somebody has to take a look at that and say, what's the potential gain? And as you're saying, Bob, who, what's the right answer, knowing that you're going to hurt somebody no matter what you do? And is, is there, is there a potential answer when we can have all and there may, may not be? But those are the decisions that leaders make. And in making them, you are, you're going to get some group of your constituents angry.
That's true.
And a good board or a good group of readers will, will talk about how we're going to respond to the anticipated frustrations or angers we'll get back. What, what is our plan to listen to that, to communicate that, to, to talk about that? And it may, I'm using my, my same example, Jana, who's my granddaughter, didn't have an answer as to why it wasn't well funded as well as they thought it should been or when she compared with, with my nephew. But there's answers there. And the question becomes, what's the communication plan that the board has to provide those answers to the community in a way that is factual, that is truthful, that has integrity, that we can stand by and that others can understand? And that's just the world today. You can't, it's very difficult to have everything anymore.
Very good. That brings you to the end of round one. So.
Say it again.
That brings you to the end of round one. We just seven more questions and you'll be set.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. All right. So Dr. Nipper, let's see where we are. Yes, your, your mic, your X is off, so you're ready to go.
My mic is on, my mic is alive and so am I.
All right, sir.
Both of which are very good things. But anyway, I want to talk about, a little bit about the curriculum and maybe I'm, well, I'd like you to expand on what you think should be done regarding curriculum and curricular choices. Because kids have to make a lot of choices. There were a lot of courses I would have loved to take in high school, but I couldn't because I was pursuing a STEM topic. And I'm asked, and, and what I'm asking you to, is to think about the big picture of how you, how you prepare kids for the choices that they're making. Because I'm not just choosing to study opera. I'm also choosing to not study physics. So what do you bring from your background in leadership training that's going to, that's going to help the kids? And I'm sorry, I'm praising this badly. So I, but I'm praising it badly. But what do you bring to help those kids understand the choices that they're making as they go through, especially in the upper grades from, I guess, eight on? Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe it was Tom Peters in one of his books, I think it was one of the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People or something like that.
That was Stephen Covey.
Covey, thank you. One of the principles he talks about is begin with the end in mind. And I have tried very much with my sons, with myself, with my grandchildren, to engage them in talks about potential future. Because it's clarity of the future that helps us make the best decisions in the present. And the more students can be helped to begin to paint, to think about potential scenarios for their future. It gives the, the greater clarity I have around those scenarios, the greater understanding I can have about the choices I'm making in the present. Now, that doesn't mean that a 13 year old like my, my grandson Dylan knows exactly what he wants to do, but he knows where his interests lie. And a good teacher, a good counselor, a good parent can begin to help him explore what is the range of opportunities that those interests encompass or where to go. And someone who was within that range and, and those bubbles could, could be wide, they could be small. Someone who's with, within that area, what's the kind of knowledge or experience that they need to do that stuff? So if we can teach others to understand that, it gives point of purpose to the decisions I'm making in the present. Now, how much do you lock yourself in? Well, it depends what, what grade you're in because the future could change. Dylan, since he's been a young kid, has told everyone he wants to be a paleontologist. And you, you may get there. I had an electrician at the house the other day that Dylan was watching him change fuses. And the electrician was telling Dylan how great the Western Center is. I think he went there and he was saying, this is what you should do. This is real work. It is good work. What do you want to do? Dylan looked at him and said, I'd like to be a paleontologist. And this electrician who's a very, very bright man and a talented man looked at him and said, well, I guess there's work in that area. You know, he never explored it. He, he, he didn't and it is there. But he also said that Dylan is a fallback position. You may want to take some courses from the Western Center because it's really good. And I'm repeating myself, but I think the more we can help students begin to visualize the future, it is through visualizing the future that we are enabled to make more knowledgeable choices about the present. Does that, does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense and I don't, you know, we're, we're under a time constraint. But I remember the pruning because I followed a STEM career. And one of the things I wanted to do was, and people were pushing me, you should participate in the theater. Well, I didn't do it because I was pursuing STEM and engineering at that time was extremely focused. And it wasn't until I was in my 40s that I was able to do theater and have a little bit of a touch of it. And you get a strong sense of the road not taken when you do that sort of thing at that age. And even running for school board, which I did, and which is what you're doing right now, was sort of a strong sense of the road not taken. And there's a nostalgia and a wistfulness about it.
Would there have been clues or cues that your parents or teachers would have seen in you as you pursued STEM that would show them that there's a budding artist inside this engineer mind?
That's a longer discussion and I know, I can't see Bob lingering on camera, but I can see the hook coming out. And our discussion must move on.
As I say, the role of teacher is mentor.
We're going to jump into Parker now to.
Good mentors can begin to see those clues.
I'd love to continue this discussion.
I'm sorry.
I'd love to continue. I'd love to continue this discussion, but we've got to proceed. Thank you.
Engineers could benefit from the arts.
And the arts can benefit from engineering. Some of the best engineering I ever saw was designing a stage set.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
There is design and purpose to the flow of a play too.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you still here.
I'll turn my mic off now so you won't, so you won't get confused.
Oh, look at that. I went to go to Mr. Parker and I don't see him on the list anymore. Has he fallen off? Look, Mr. Parker's curfew has come up. So we'll go to Mr. Lappic in the meantime until Mr. Parker comes back.
Could have been my first question.
Hello again.
Hi, how are you?
Doing fine and yourself?
Good. You were the one walking your dogs at the end of the meeting?
Depends today or the other day?
The board meeting on Tuesday.
Day, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I've got three dogs.
Interesting picture of you.
Before I'd asked you about experience that would be the most effective as a school board member. What are the qualities that you feel that you possess that are going to be most important?
Integrity, probably above all else. Not to say that I haven't been ashamed of myself at times in my life, but I hope it's been less rather than more. But I've tried to live with integrity as a driving value. Understanding others. Realizing that we were given two ears and one mouth for a reason. Someone wanted us to use our ears twice as much as our mouth. And it is by understanding others that I can gain greater clarity to both their point of view and my own point of view. And it's by understanding others where I can learn. Someone once said, and may have been Covey again, seek first to understand, then to be understood. Because there's, there's a respect in that. So I, I think understanding others, which helps with community awareness, community responsiveness. I try and be the best leader that I can be to understand my personal values and to live those values, to be a role model, to understand the vision of the organization or my own vision and to get others to buy in or to buy in and to work to achieve that, to, to believe in a higher purpose and, and work to achieve those purposes. Communication, I think I mentioned, but as much as I said, you have two ears, you also do have a mouth. And learning to speak up and to challenge to me is as important as, as learning to just go along or to, I'm not sure that's collaboration in the truest sense, but to just go along with the group. But to be able to challenge the status quo, the way things that are done, but to do that in a respectful way is a quality that I attempt to display and have in, in my life. Decision making and problem solving. I have tried in, in my life, even though my wife keeps telling me I'm more of a psychologist or a philosopher, to have a more systematic approach to decision making, to problem solving, to, to begin to look at things analytically. So I'd say those areas, integrity, communications, challenging, collaborating, listening, talking, communicating, understanding others, trying to be a leader that is a role model to others. And in this area of decision making and, and problem solving. I don't want to act like they're easy, but they're worth striving for.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's very well said. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Parker, I see you back online. Would you like to pick up where we left off?
I'm, I am back. Sorry about that. My hotspot died.
That's okay.
All right. I believe we're on the second round of questions. If you're appointed to the school board at our next meeting, would you run in the next election? And would the retired citizens in our community vote for you? And would our parents vote for you and why?
Would I run? If I could look back and believe that I contributed in a manner that I thought I could, if other members of the board, the school administration, the community were telling me that my contributions made a difference, and if I was getting that feedback, yes, I would run again. I, I didn't throw my name in the hat just for the sense of being on a board. I'm 70. I mean, I don't, I don't know. It's this desire to contribute. So if at the time, I don't even know what you do to run. I know there's forms you need to fill out. But if at the end of that period, if my colleagues were saying you should run again, and if I could honestly look back at that assessment, when I said integrity is important in my life, if I could look at myself and say, you know, Jane, you were able to be yourself. You spoke up like you said you wanted to. You listened like you said you wanted to. You collaborated what you said to do, but above all else you had integrity and it made a difference. Then yes, I would run again. And see if those things happen, then what others would be saying about me is here's how he contributed to making a difference. Here's the kind of person he is. Here's the kind of things that he did. And because of that, we will vote for him again. And because of that, we will vote for him again because he did what he said he would do. He lived by his values. He demonstrated consistency with his values. He demonstrated a concern and a passion for making this school district the best, the very best, even better than it is. And he delivered on that promise. And he delivered in that promise in a collaborative way. I'm not looking for the spotlight to shine on me. I was a drummer much of my life. The spotlight always shines on the lead singer. I'm okay. The drummer keeps the rhythm going, and that's fine with me. But if I looked back on this term, which I believe goes to November of next year, and say, "You know, I was true to myself. I kept the rhythm going. I contributed. I helped make a difference. I want to keep it going." But it's not about the running that's important, or it's not about the being on the ballot that's important to me. It's the opportunity to keep it going. That's what drives me.
Very, very good. Mrs. Broom?
Yes, you're back to me again.
Hello again.
Hello again. What is your greatest achievement?
There's, there's many. Let, let me pick two. It was the first two that came to mind, although the one is, is an older one. I was working at Delaware County Intermediate Unit, and we were running a teacher training center and what at the time was called affective education. Teachers were getting in-service credit for courses. I, we taught the courses. There was a group of us. And I got a call one day from a director at the Department of Health in Harrisburg. His name was Phil, and he said, "Jay, we've been watching the work that you're doing in Delaware County with the Teacher Training Center." And it was funded through Drug and Alcohol Abuse Prevention Funds at the time. My, my first role in life was a drug and alcohol abuse counselor, and then I was leading the counseling center. But Phil called me and said, "We've been looking at the work you're doing in Delaware County with the Teacher Training Center and with the curriculum work," and it was a drug and alcohol abuse prevention curriculum. He said, "We have money that we're giving to, to the state." At the time, it was Bob Scanlon, who was Secretary of Education. And he said, "We'd like you to come up and replicate what you did in Delaware County at the state level." I wish I was that young again, but I'll tell you, I never worked so hard and, and had other people working so hard to, to achieve something, just from that sense of recognition. So that's one. Let me give you two others. I'll, I'll make them quick. I was a horrible student in school. The rap on Jay was that he was smart, but he didn't try. Barely made it through high school. Said my sister was a math major, so was my father, so I didn't know what to do at college. My girlfriend at the time, who's now my wife, filled out an application for me to go to Westchester, and they put me down as a math major. I flunked out freshman year. My parents weren't really talking to me much anymore. But I was leaving the campus in my Volkswagen van with my old English sheepdog, Arthur, and my set of drums in the back. And my intro psych teacher walked up to me. Her name was Dr. Milgram. And she said, she said, "How you doing?" I said, "Good." I was living off campus, so she had to walk off campus to find me. And she said, "Dr. Clark, who's the chairman of the psychology department, is looking for an undergraduate assistant. If I got you an interview," it's an interesting question, she said, "Would you show up?" And I said, "Yes." I said, "But I'm not even a student anymore. I'm not matriculated." She said, "We can get you rematriculated. Get your major changed." I went to the interview and was offered the job of the undergraduate assistant, and was later offered a graduate assistant position, working for a guy by the name of Jay Clark, marvelous psychologist. That failure, in a personal way, was one of my greatest achievements. And what it taught me about the power of mentors and the power of teachers, of what they can do to change lives, is something that's lived with me since then. And then the personal one, greatest achievement, it was my 59-year-old father, as he was slain dying from colon cancer. I promised him that I would take care of his wife and his mother, excuse me. And I did. With that multi-generational family. And there's a lot, there's a lot of independence and there's a lot of freedom that a young couple loses when they choose to move multi-generational. It's not as easy as it sounds. There's a benefit. I had three women fighting over who was cooking supper for me. But I think that promise to my father probably trumps the other two stories. The one being more educational or career-oriented, the other one being personal in terms of my own development, but this one was family. And that's back to integrity. I just delivered on that promise.
Very good.
Well, I thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's my turn. So, um, I completely lost my train of thought here. Yeah, um, so as a board member, it's not just a couple meetings a month. There's other boards that many of us sit on. There's committees. There's special meetings such as tonight. Do you have time and are you willing to put in the extra time? It's also just being involved in the community, you know, going to football games, going to the plays, the concerts, stuff like that. You know, is that something you're willing to put the extra time into?
Yes, without a doubt, I would commit to that. I have seen the time you folks put in just over the schedule of meetings, which I've gotten closer to in the past week, and it's kind of, it's impressive. You know, it's a lot. I am retired. I work with the hockey teams and things like that. There's, I give a lot of my time there, but my wife and I have discussed that. I, and she said to me, Denise said to me, she says, "You don't do anything unless you do it all the way." At this level, when you're talking about 3,300 students and their lives and their futures and their careers and the community and the parents, if you're not willing to give a total commitment, you shouldn't throw your hat in the ring. Yes, I will.
Thank you.
So we've discussed three, many, many of the areas I discussed earlier, as in the three important areas I look at, which are superintendent budget and cricket. We already did curriculum. We already did budget. I'd like to hear your ideas on the role of superintendent and how it should work with the school board directors.
The school board is the boss of the superintendent. The difficulty is that there's multiple ones. So the analogy somewhat plays out as you'd have in any reporting relationship. But I think where it's similar is that in any reporting relationship, depends on the style of the bosses. I, I think especially at this level and, and any leadership level, it is the responsibility of the superintendent, or as it would be the person, to share their vision for the district, to get those buy-ins from the board. And then the board's responsibility is to contribute to the shaping of that vision. And then it's the superintendent's responsibility to present a plan to that board for achieving that vision. And again, through collaboration, questioning, challenging, talking, to get modifications or changes to those plans and put that plan in place for achieving the vision. And then the devil's in the details. After the visioning and the planning, it's the execution of that plan. And hopefully, a lot of those stage gates are part of the plan, so you, you can see how you're doing in execution. But again, it is a collaborative relationship that the board has with the superintendent in both the vision, the creation of the plan, and the execution of the plan. And I have seen boards that are more dictating, I guess in their way. My personal style, if, if, if we've done our job well as a board, we have hired a superintendent who is qualified and knows their stuff. And then it's giving them room to be as great as they can be, but providing the oversight, the input, and, and making sure our questions are being heard, our ideas are being heard, at times incorporated. But it's that mutual respectful relationship that drives the accomplishment of the vision, the plan, and, and the execution. You're looking at me. It's like, there's more. You're thinking.
No. Thank you.
All right, we're going to be the last question for the second round, and the last question of the interview is, we've asked everybody so far, and you know, may or may not be a fair question, but it is a question that we asked the other two, and we're going to ask you as well. The vote on Tuesday night, you said you watched the whole thing. Thank you for that. As somebody else has said, at our best and at our worst, how would, if you had been on the board on Tuesday, how would you have voted?
It's an interesting discussion question. It's been a discussion of my son, my daughter-in-law, my wife and me at home. My son and my daughter, and my, my son and my daughter-in-law did not listen to the meeting. My wife and I did. My daughter-in-law, Amy, was, was very supportive of the hybrid model prior to, to the board meeting and had been talking it up within the family. And it seemed to make sense to me, mainly around the value of choice. Because when you look at the work that came back from the survey, that wasn't a perfect 50-50 split, but it was more than 60-40. It was, it was 46, whatever that is, 54 of the audience saying, "I, I want the kids in school," and the other half saying, "I would rather go virtual." So I went into the meeting feeling that I would have supported the hybrid plan. Now, the hybrid plan is only two days, so there's still that virtual component, given that it's, what's the word you, you guys use, synchronous two of the days and asynchronous one of the days. But nonetheless, there's still some classroom time, and that seemed to make sense for those families who needed to work or need to do other things, or from whose kids, for whatever reason, would benefit from that socialization. So my son knew that my wife and I don't, we get a voice, but we don't get a vote because it's their kids. So my son had been talking to us about that. He, he and his wife were leaning, his name is Ryan. Ryan and Amy were leaning towards not, not voting, but turning in whatever it is they needed to turn in, the same, they would like their kids to go in the, in the hybrid. And then Ryan, who I continued to learn from, came down to me one night, wanted to talk to me. And he said, "You know, I think the reason for the hybrid is they want to see their friends, but the majority of their friends are their hockey friends, their true friends. And we're trying to keep the rink open right now. They're there one night a week for practice while the parents aren't in, so they're getting some level of socialization one night a week." And Ryan said, "Given that, and given where we are as a country in quick-return testing, and given the pluses and minuses of just temperature-taking to determine problems, Ryan changed his mind and said, "You know, I talked to the boys. We're going to go virtual." This was before the board meeting. So that also influenced my thing. We're, we're going to go virtual because we think their needs are being met. They're good academic kids. They handled it well before. As I said, they've been honors and distinguished honors. And, you know, they're, they're doing the other things. So I said, "Well, okay," but I thought, "Well, still, the choice makes, makes sense." Honestly, my honest feedback in listening to the meeting, I was put back by, it was the honesty of the response I appreciated, but the uncertainty of readiness, not around the educational component, but around the safety and health component in terms of the circulation system. Will it be ready in time? In terms of, even if we're not doing quick-return testing, in terms of the readiness of the, I forget the monitors you're using for the temperature taking, we have enough of them in time. And there were just too many answers for me. And I'm not saying they said this, but I'm paraphrasing. It said, "We'll do our very best to get it ready in time." And that was the turning point for me in the meeting. And in fact, it was for my wife that simultaneously, we looked at each other and we said, "I wouldn't risk that with my kid." And that's not a knock on the district. And I realized in making that change how hard that is because you have 1,600, 1,700 families who, who are, want to send their kids back in the classroom, who need to get back to what they're doing, who need to get back to work. So it became a question of risk for me. It's, it's, it's a very, very interesting, it's almost a moral question. We know we have quality education here. But the schools, you could argue that active shooters have pushed us in a direction of safety. But by and large, the history of the schools has not been to specialize in, in safety and health, not that we don't have good nurses and things like that, but to consider a pandemic. We've just not done it before. So when I heard people saying, "Well, we think we can retrofit, but we don't know if we can get all the parts, but we might have it. We think we'll have this stuff and we'll do our very best." Now, they're not lying, and I'm not knocking those people. They are good, hard-working, well-intended people, so don't get me wrong. But when the best that they could give was a highly probable, for me, that was the dividing line between health and safety risk of, of students, realizing that even as a board member, I'd, I'd be getting some angry email from some portion of 46% of people who answered honestly and have a real need to do that. I have been comforted in the fact, as I watch the news and read what other school districts are doing, that it seems that many people are also delaying, many other school districts are delaying going back to a hybrid model. So if the members of the community are also watching that same news, they're getting reinforcement that we, as a nation right now, just aren't ready. And it's sad we're not ready. I think we could be ready, but we're just not there. And it almost seemed to me in the meeting as if many people, in fact, one, one of you even said that you, you changed your mind. I, I forget. I, it doesn't matter who it was. One person said they came in wanting to vote for hybrid, but in listening, it may have been the same thing they listened to changed midway through the meeting. And it was that lack of assurance. I don't think the assurance can ever be 100%. But I don't even think it was up to 80 in, in what I read, in, in the voices, the people I heard talking. And, and that, that assurance at a level at less than, I don't know, I'd want it to be 90, I'd want it, "We can do this," even though we've never done it before. It just, for me, it wasn't there. And it's a shame because there's, there was a lot of, lot of hard work and a lot of effort and a lot of thought put, put into that plan. And again, the devil's in the details. And, and it's human health. And yes, you may believe that younger kids aren't going to get as sick, but there's adults in the schools too, and there's adults that they go home to and things like that. So I think in the end, and I don't know what conclusion you guys have, have come to, women and men have come to, but I know my wife and I are almost relieved in the decision. Are almost relieved in the decision. We think you made. At the end of the day, made a good decision, it was a rough discussion you had. There were some frustrations expressed in that, in that it was evident that was there to be seen. But I commend each of you. For the respect you showed to each other, for collaboration, even in challenging each other. And I realize those meetings are public in challenging each other. It showed you have hearts. It showed you care. It showed the quality of your thinking. And me personally, I'm glad you, I'm glad you went the direction that you did. And I just really hope. We can get them open as soon as we can. With a level of assurance that. Makes us all proud of the district and of the way we're able to protect the health of our teachers and our students.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and all of your answers. We thank you for coming in this evening. And with that, we'll, thanks for your time.
Thank you for even considering me. It's an honor just to be considered and thank you to each of you for the. The work that you do. It's making a difference in six little strokes.
And with that. Mrs. Bicker, bring you back to your seat and she'll go back and get Mr. Thompson and we'll start with our fourth candidate.
There's a thing here in the book.
You can get that way. All right, you're going to be at that spot.
Yeah, I don't like the feedback and I like it, my mask off, so I'm happy here. Thanks. All right, Mr. Thompson, welcome. The way this is going to work is each of the seven of us are going to ask you two questions. We're going to do it. One at a time, so you'll get one question and. Go to the next person and so on. But before that, you're going to get a chance to give us a few opening remarks, just pretty much anything that comes to your mind. We just ask that you keep it sort of under five minutes, if you wouldn't mind. Just a little bit, it could be pretty much anything you want to say, just about anything, just keep it clean. Other than that, any topic you wish to talk about.
Okay, well, I am interested in the position. My father kind of set an example of giving back to the community. And in the past, I have done that through the arts. Just kind of seems like a good time for me to consider doing something else. And Mr. Lappic told me about the. Vacancy on the school board and how they were filling it. And I thought it was a really good idea. Things just kind of lined up. I have two children still in the high school. My son graduated this past June. I am, I believe I probably put this in the, the letter, my wife died two and a half years ago and. I feel a certain debt to the school district because of. The just amazing support we got. My son especially really struggled with losing his mom and his counselors and his teachers. Did not let him sink. So. This is my opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was very nice. We're going to start our questioning with Dr. Nipper. Let's see.
My mic.
You're ready to go.
My mic is live.
He's ready to go. All right. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for showing up and thank you for being so patient tonight. Eventually, this COVID crisis is going to end and our kids are going to. Return to a regular school after a long period of time where they've not had face-to-face education. What do you think are the problems associated with the transition? I want to look ahead. And get beyond the COVID crisis and what do you think is going to, we're going to have to do. To reorient the kids when we, when we return to a normal education? And what do you think your role as a school director ought to be in that process?
I think that, I mean, it's very difficult at the moment to be able to say for certain, just how difficult that transition will be. If it's at the end of the first marking period. The kids will only have really been out for two quarters and kids do tend to be resilient. I think that the transition will be relatively smooth. I think that if it goes much further than that. It starts to get more and more difficult. I think that. There will probably be a need for, for lack of a better term, orientation. I mean, there will probably be a period, hopefully a very brief period of time. When we're going to have to get the kids back in the building and the teachers. And reintroduce them to each other and reintroduce the kids to the idea that. Learning is going to become linear again. You're in art class from eight till nine, you're in math class from nine to 10 and so on. That's not. The online learning is not going to be as rigidly structured, so. They're going to have to adapt and I think that you're going to see a. Need for an orientation period when we bring the kids back. As far as what the directors need to do, we need to support. The students and the teachers and the school as a whole to make that happen.
Very good. We'll go to Mr. Parker now.
Sorry, I forgot he was next. All right, what do you see the role of a school director being?
You mean this week or in general? The, the school board has, among other things, the financial responsibility of running the school district. I mean, the administration is going to ask for things and the teachers union is going to ask for things, but the school board. Is the one who has the power of the purse. I think this year and well, since the spring, the school board has been tasked with a lot of things that. None he has signed up for. Decisions about how to handle the current crisis. And I think that, you know, that's a second role of a school board is when things out of the ordinary come up. The directors have to step up and address those issues. And it, you know, I wish my imagination was wild enough to come up with something equivalent to the pandemic, but I'm sorry. I got nothing.
Okay, thank you very much and good evening. Every one of us brings a different skill set to the table. I was just curious if you have any, is there a single. Volunteer or work experience that you feel will be most beneficial to you in the role as a school board director?
I've sat on boards in the past, so I have some experience with being a member of a board. I think that will help. I have a strong technology background. And technology is becoming, you know, and will continue to become increasingly important in K through 12 education. And I have a, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I really do believe that, you know. I owe the school district something for everything that they have done for my family.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Thomas. Thank you for filling out the application. Question for you, what do you like and dislike about Potts Grove School District?
Honestly, I'm probably at the moment, one of the biggest boosters of the school district. I, our children started at St. Aloysius. My son is autistic and by fifth grade, we discovered that. The parochial schools do not have the resources that a public school district has. Probably could have figured that out sooner, but. The support that he has gotten, you know, for the seven years that he was here is just remarkable to me. I can't say enough good things about people like Mrs. Childs and Ms. Riley and, you know, they just. They really went, and all of his teachers really. I mean, they just all went, as far as I'm concerned, above and beyond to help him succeed. That, you know. Obviously, I mean, you can see there's a little gray here. I graduated from high school in 1977 and. Public schools were very different back then. So. Honestly, I can't, I mean, I guess I'll whine about my taxes there. That's the one thing I don't like about the school district. My taxes are too high. I just, I really don't have anything negative to say. The, the experience that we have had here has been outstanding.
Well, thank you for your kind comments.
I'm going to go next because I know Ashley's on her way to get some.
I'm here, Al. I'm here. I just made it home. I'm on my phone now.
She's going to be on the road with her.
Luckily, I don't live far. And I did hear everything else, just so you guys know. So, all right, so my question is. So we. We pride ourselves on not being a rubber stamp board, you know, we don't just. All vote the same way all the time. We ask a lot of questions. We, you know, we do our research. And, you know, sometimes we vote differently on things. So if there's something you're very passionate about, passionate about. And when the vote comes, it doesn't go your way, how would you deal with that? How would you react?
Actually, I have experience with that in other boards I've sat on. It's part of the role of a board member. You know, to Jim's question earlier, word has a responsibility to the. Population of the county ships that make up the school district. And the issues are just going to get more and more complex. Not ignore the pandemic for the moment, just the use of technology in the classrooms and what programs to offer. And the odds of you finding nine people who agree on any one of these issues, let alone all of them, is pretty slim. And I think that's to everybody's benefit. If it doesn't go my way, then, you know, onwards and upwards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now I get to go.
Now it's your turn.
Now's my turn. Okay, so in my personal belief, I always say that there's three different areas. That I find most important for a school director, hiring and working with a superintendent. Working with the budget, of course, and the curriculum you're setting up for the students. Now, you had already mentioned about the budget, the purse strings and obviously taxes and such like that. So I'd like you to elaborate a little bit on that area as into your thoughts of with this. Crisis and pandemic are going, we may have some financial situations that are going to be coming up. We're going to be short on certain areas. We're going to have a lot of negotiating groups who are still going to want their raises and such like that. So can you elaborate as into what direction you would suggest and you're going to be looking at going to?
I don't think I have enough information for a concrete answer. But I think at, at an abstract level, yeah, you're going to have financial problems. We all are. And everybody's going to have to give a little bit. And that's a very difficult thing to negotiate. But I really think that's the only thing that's going to work is. I mean, God forbid, programs have to get cut. That would be among the worst scenarios. But it's equally bad if. Teacher and administration staffs, teacher and administration and staff salaries. You know, stagnate for too long. There are no good. You know, easy fixes. There's going to be a financial problem because this thing is unprecedented. And. Everybody's going to have to give a little bit and nobody is probably going to be happy with what they're asked to give. So it's going to be. Negotiations, diplomacy. And, you know, that's probably even more important than the actual numbers on the spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Actually loves occupancy sensors.
The. The other part of the board's responsibility is to. Select and evaluate the superintendent. And work with the superintendent and. So that, in that sense, you know, the balance is, how do you, how do you do that? How does the board? Work with the superintendent? What is the right way? And how do we as nine members of the board work with the president of the board? And work with the superintendent, work with the administration? How does the board communicate together and then get their ideas across the superintendent and get them back out to the. Administration and all of that. And we'd have committees and there'll be a question on that in a little bit. How do you see that role functioning in terms of the evaluation of the superintendent and the communication going? So that everything works well? How do you, how do you see that role fitting? And how do you see your participation in that with the other members of the board and going up superintendent and sort of back, back the other way?
So this is one of the, I think, rare areas in the board's responsibilities. Where consensus amongst the board is really important. I think that the, so the superintendent is the chief executive. But the board has priorities and the board has things they want to accomplish. And I think the board needs to speak as one. When working with the superintendent. Now, what happens? To get the nine members to reach consensus, you know, is beyond me. I mean, it's negotiations again. But I think that, at least my impression is that. The board will be most effective when they are speaking with one voice to the superintendent. And. If he has clear direction, it seems to me that he is going to do a better job. And be easier to evaluate. I mean, if. He does what the board asks, that's kind of the ideal situation. And he's not always going to agree with the board, but. That's okay too. You know, it's if, if the superintendent tries to drive a wedge. Between factions of the board, that's where I think that becomes a real problem.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so that ends round one. We'll go back to Dr. Nippert for the beginning of round two.
Okay. This is a real fast one. How would you have voted Tuesday? On?
Yeah, I, I know what you're asking and I'm I'm 99%. I would have voted with the majority. I think that the risks associated with opening the schools right now, at least for the first quarter, are significant. But this will sound selfish. I'm really glad I wasn't on the board Tuesday night. I, uh, there was no good answer. I think that the board did a good thing by holding off on opening the building for a quarter or however long it takes to get the virus under control.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So this is a multi-part question. If you're, if we appoint you to the, to fill the seat until the next election, would you run at the next election? And would the parents in the district vote for you? And would the retired senior citizens vote for you? And why?
It is my intent, if, well, it is my intent to run whether I'm selected tonight or not. I suppose there's an outside chance that the experience will be bad and I might choose not to, but I, I really can't imagine that. I think that, you know, this is, this is what you do. So, yeah, my, my plan is to run for the seat when the election comes up. Will the retired citizens vote for me? I'm not sure. I think that making an investment in the school system is important. And I would not pretend to know what it's like to live on a fixed income and watch my taxes go up. I'm not on a fixed income and I'm watching my taxes go up. I imagine it's much worse for the seniors. So they might not like everything I say. Because I think it is important to continue to invest in the students. The rest of the population, I'm, I'd like to think that they would. I'd like to think that, you know, I am, I believe in a strong school system and I'd like to believe that they all do, too.
Very good. Thank you very much. That was, that was very good. Patty.
First, I wanted to say, and I forgot to say, I'm so sorry for your wife, her loss. As a breast cancer survivor, you know, I know how the caregivers always seem to have it harder, but you'll be in my prayers and I'm so sorry for that.
Thank you.
My question for you, what is your greatest achievement?
Marrying my wife.
Oh, melt my heart.
Honestly, I mean, I started a family, I got married and I started a family later than most. I was 40. And I really do consider supporting Judy and, you know, raising the kids to be the most important thing I've done. I mean, I've got some technical achievements and stuff, but they kind of pale compared to family. And I'm probably a little sensitive about family.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So.
Well, thank you for that.
All right, it's my turn now. Okay. So as a board member, we're not just going to two meetings a month.
Wait, 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 two meetings?
Yeah.
Jim, you lied to me.
You know, there's, there's other boards that many of us sit on. There's committees that we are a part of, that are within the district. And in addition to that, then, you know, a lot of us try to make ourselves, you know, just make sure that we're seen at, at event, not even seen. We just go to events to, to support the school. You know, football games, you know, plays, musicals, stuff like that. So is that something that you're willing to put the extra time into? You know, because we, we get paid so much to do this.
Well, that is what I heard.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm counting my retirement now.
Right, right.
I think the, the musicals, the band concerts, the football games, they're fun anyway. I try to get to some of them now and this would be added incentive, if you will, to attend even more of them. The other committees, that's the job. That's part of the job. So, and I did actually have a long chat with Mr. Lappic about just how much of my time I was going to need to commit. And it doesn't sound overwhelming. It sounds like a serious commitment, but it, it's not like I'm going to leave my children starving because I'm reading a document that I need to study before a board meeting. I think I can manage it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, back to me. So we've discussed, obviously, two of the, my three primaries, which is superintendent and the budget. One of the areas I'm very passionate about is developing and helping our curriculum for our students and obviously our teachers. Right? I sit on the curriculum committee, Ashley, Jim as well, Dr. Nippert, we all sit on the curriculum committee and, and it's very important to us. I'd like to hear your thoughts on how our curriculum has been developed and our use of different tools we use inside of the district with like maps and everything like that.
There are financial constraints that I'll stipulate exist, but I don't think any school district goes far enough with curriculum. Period. I mean, you can't do it all. I don't know yet how you actually manage that particular problem, but obviously, the core classes, see, I've learned some vocabulary with my, from my kids. The core classes are, are important, but I think all of the other stuff is too. I think that the students get so much out of playing on a team. And it, it goes with you throughout your life and your career. You learn how to be part of a team. That's a valuable lesson. The arts, that happens to be my bailiwick and, you know, I would love to see more of it. Again, you know, students do learn something valuable from putting on a concert or play or a musical. That's just, you know, it's a real loss if they don't get that experience. Foreign languages are important and becoming more important. And I happen to think still a work in progress, technology is a big part of the solution. I think the technology can help the teachers multiply their effort. And not just teach more classes, but help the student who's falling behind in a core class or an extracurricular. What do they call them now? Okay, I haven't learned everything from my kids. So, you know, I, that happens to be how I made my living up until very recently was I worked for an AV integrator who did a lot of college education. We didn't do a lot of K through 12 just because there were other companies that had a lock on the market, but, but technology does, and, and there are people out there doing incredibly cool stuff with technology for classrooms. These, clearly, I was more the technical guy than the education guy, but we did classrooms down at Thomas Jefferson and the, the students like had buzzers. They were around, they were like 12 or 15 little round tables that seated four students. And the teacher would walk around the class and the students had buzzers if they needed help or if they had an answer to a question. There's, there's lots of things that technology can do to help the teachers. But you can't lose sight of what aspects of the curriculum are important. And like I said, unfortunately, I'm one of those guys who wants it all. I think that all these things are important.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in since you skipped over me.
And that was on purpose, Jim. You told me one meeting in a, a month.
Every other day, whatever the case is. I'm sorry. Before I'd asked you about a past experience that, you know, a worker, you know, volunteer friend said would be helpful to. Going beyond that, there, the qualities, what are the qualities that you feel that are going to be most important to you in being a superintendent? I very promoted you.
Wow, I got promoted.
Wait a minute, is that a promotion?
Been a long meeting.
Well, I am kind of passionate about education. I think that it's the silver bullet, if you will, to an awful lot of problems. I'm a pretty good communicator, both, you know, written and spoken. I do like to listen to all sides before I make up my own mind and then stick to it forever. I am a team player. I, one of the things I enjoyed most about being, sitting on the board at DCP Theater was the, whatever number of us it was at any given time, because it was changing constantly. We were building something. And it was something that none of us individually could have built. But as a team, we did. And we didn't always agree. We did always speak as one voice once we, you know, made up our minds, once, you know, we figured out which direction we were going on something, we did speak as one voice. I don't know that that's, with the exception of the previously discussed, working with the superintendent, I'm not sure that that's as important or practical for a school board. But those would be qualities that I think I can bring to the position.
Thank you. All right. I don't think we've touched on this one before. Are there any district issues? And I guess maybe we did indirectly with Patty's question about anything that you dislike about the district, but are there any district issues that you feel specifically need attention? Anything that you feel would be, could be improved specifically?
You know, I'm sure there are. My situation is kind of unique. I never doubted for a second that I had the support of the entire school district. Even when it was something as, I mean, I don't want to trivialize it, but having a son who's autistic wasn't actually the worst thing I've ever had to deal with. What's his name? Mr. Kirshner at the middle school. I mean, the guy was just a prince. I mean, he's, so no, I mean, I, I think the school district does a really good job of delivering a good education. And not beating the taxpayer senseless. Although I'm sure there are taxpayers who would disagree with that.
All right.
No, I mean, I, I, once I am sitting on the board and, you know, peeking behind the curtain, I will probably find things that I think could improve, if for no other reason than efficiency. But as a taxpayer and the parent of students, one of whom needed additional services, I got nothing but, you know, but praise.
Well, very good. Thanks very much for that. And I think with that, we're going to thank you for coming in. Thank you for asking your, answering your questions. And we'll, we'll ask Mrs. Bicker to come out and escort you back and seat you down. And we'll bring in our fifth and final contestant for this evening, Mr. Tremble.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming in. Believe it or not, for those of you keeping track at home, that qualifies as our lightning round for this evening.
So just confirming, the person coming in is Mr. Tremble?
Correct. And he will be our last. Now, we've mentioned a couple times, he's our fifth one. The intention is that when Mr. Tremble concludes, we are going to then try and decide on which of the five that we would like to elect, but we're not going to swear in this evening, I would like to select tonight and have our vote get to a majority of four, at least four voting on this. And then swear them in on Tuesday, birthday, with their family there and all that, for Tuesday at the meeting. But I would like to make this selection tonight. Okay. A slight delay. Well, Mr. Tremble is getting his notes from the back room.
Hi, how are you?
Very well, sir. How are you, Sealy?
I'm doing fine, doing fine.
Very good. Well, your patience is finally, I don't know, about to be rewarded. Let's, let's use that as the word. So, welcome. What's about to happen is that you have, the seven board members are here in our various locations and we're about to ask you two questions each. We'll start off with one of our board members, Dr. Nippert, and then we'll just go around in order. Each, each of one of us will ask you one question. You'll answer the question, two rounds, and at the end, you'll be all done. Simple. Before that begins, you get an opportunity to give us any opening remarks you care to. Keep it short-ish, five minutes or so on any topic you wish, just introductory remarks on any subject.
Okay, I'm, I, I view your role and the role that I'm interested in, in helping to fulfill as probably one of the more important opportunities you could have. I, I believe that, you know, quality public schools and maintaining that level of quality has kind of been the great equalizer for what's happened this century and the previous century and maybe back into even the one before that. That a great education up through K to 12 can help ensure that you can get to the next step. It, it provides, if everything goes as we would like it to go, it, it gives everybody the same, in theory, the same opportunity to achieve what, what they need to achieve, to make the most out of their life. And people like you, in the roles that you fulfill, you, you have a difficult task because you, you have to walk a fine line. If you're doing your job correctly, I, and I believe you guys are based on the reputation of the school district, you do a, a great job of ensuring that the kids that go to the schools in this town get the resources that they need to succeed. in this town get the resources that they need to succeed. And you do it in a fashion such that you don't price people like me who are living on their retirement income out of the market. And that, that's a difficult line to walk because you want to be able to do both. And sometimes that's not easy and it takes a lot of creativity. And I, I, I respect that skill that you have and that's exemplified by the results that you're able to achieve here. I, I've been a public school advocate pretty much since I retired. As you may have seen on my resume, I ended up having to retire early because of a health issue. But I took that time to take advantage of becoming involved in my kids' school life and, and becoming involved in the functions of the school board, not necessarily being a school board member, but I got on various citizen committees. I volunteered at elementary schools and did guided reading and tutored math and helped them get ready for their achievement tests, things like that at the fourth grade level, the eighth grade level, and as far as guided reading and tutoring first and second grade. And yeah, I, I met a lot of people that I still consider to be lifelong friends. I earned the trust of the principals of both schools that I worked at. And I learned actually how much heart goes into developing the, the kids, not just scholastically, but, you know, in their hearts. The, the teachers always supported them. And it was, it was a great learning experience for me. I had, I had never had that opportunity to spend that much time in my kids' classroom before because of the amount of overtime I had to work. And I, I don't regret one minute of it. And I got to know every kid in my neighborhood and on a first-name basis. And it was actually a highlight for me. I, you know, when, when, when you're forced to retire, you wonder how you're going to spend your days. And I was lucky in that friends of mine had, their wives were, were involved in PTA. They were heavily involved in, in the schools. They were able to set me up with volunteer jobs and, and it was life-changing for me. I was in, in, at a point in my life where not having the access to my career and those kinds of contacts and, and interactions with people, you kind of feel worthless. I mean, I didn't have a, didn't have a mission and they gave me a mission and it was life-changing for me. And when I moved to Philadelphia, I became a fair funding advocate because my grandkids are going to go to a school that's underfunded by $400 million or a school district that's underfunded by $400 million. I toured their facilities and it's, it's heartbreaking. It, it is. It, it's, it's like a third world. And it opened my eyes to the difference between the haves and the have-nots. And I'm, taking on a task that I never thought I would, I would, I would take on by myself and I'm part of a team, but the aspect that, of it that, that I'm doing, which is mostly the data analysis, it's it's rewarding in that it, it will ultimately end up doing some good, but it's, it's fairly demanding because I'm, I'm reaching to the point where I'm going to be out of my depth. But I look at it as, as I've, as I've always looked at the advocacy role, there are resources. If you, if you, if you look hard enough, you can find people who are willing to help you. I've got some help out of the county. I've got some help out of their sinus college. I've got some help out of Montgomery Community College to, to ease this, this effort. And I, I can assure you that I'm the kind of person who does not give up. I've been knocked down a number of times in my life in various aspects and, and not once did I fail to answer the bell to get back up and finish the job. And I worked in an environment that was highly data-driven. We built radars and sonars that challenged the, 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 the limits of known physics. And we had to do so and try to make a profit. And you don't do that by, with folks who give up. You, you only are successful at doing that if you develop a process that, that leads you to success. And if you have a good process, you're going to get where you need to go. And I do not view my role or a future role or potential role as a board member as a micromanager or as an auditor or a pain in your rear end. I view it as more of a, of a stewardship type role, just to make sure you are following the process, you set clear goals, there's clear measurement points to determine whether things are on track or not. And that the process that you follow is transparent. And as, as long as that can be met, I, I, I think, you know, I, I would love to be part of some unit like that. And I think I could contribute to your process simply because of the background that I had. It was a highly regulated type business. It was a defense contract industry. And we had more auditors almost than we had financial analysts chasing us down. And, you know, we, we had to come up with processes that enabled us to deal with that level of oversight. Because you, you can't always be on the wrong end of an audit report. And most of the businesses I worked with, we improved the operation while we were there and we answered the mail, got rid of backlog of things that needed to be done based on their rules and regulations that weren't done before we got there. But after we had been there for a while, we got it turned around. And you don't need that kind of remedial help. I, I'm going to learn a lot from you and, and honestly, I, I, I think I would take every opportunity to learn as much about how you do things as I need to, whether that's going to all the committee meetings in advance of the board meetings, trying to get time if, as COVID will allow, to meet with principals and parents to get their perspective on, on what's important to them and what they view as, as successes and what, what, what could use some help and what their priorities are. Again, it's, 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 it's not a a line-type position. It's, it's just looking over your shoulder, making sure we understand why things are being done the, the way they're done and, and that we agree with the logic and what the result you're, you're going for. As far as open state, but that's, that's about as far as I'm, you know, I, I want to take it at this stage. I'd much rather hear from you.
Okay. Very good. All right, Dr. Nippert, are you ready to go?
Yeah. Can you hear me, Mr. Tremble? Okay, good. Okay. Eventually, this COVID crisis is going to end. And we're going to have students and kids who have been in virtual education for a considerable period of time. And my question, my question is looking down the road, looking to the, to the inevitable end of this and the start of something that is hopefully good and better. What problems do you see when we reopen schools in a more normal fashion? What problems do you see for the students and what do you see is the role of the school board in addressing that issue?
Well, I, I, I think from the student's standpoint, they're probably very anxious to get back to, to a normal way of doing things. And they, they may not always be paying attention to what the requirements are to, to enable them to come back in to, to the school environment in a safe fashion, like maintaining social distance, like making sure you have your mask on. No, no touching hands, no sharing food, no sharing drinks, whatever. They, they become overcome by their excitement just at being able to be back. I, I look at what I saw on TV going on in Georgia. I don't think that's what's going to happen here. But that may be the, the extreme of what you might be worried about. What, you know, because it was just a throng of kids going through the hallway without, without masks on, packed in as tight as they could be packed in. And no one wants to see a kid get sick and, and have something, you know, bad happen to them. And I, I think from the, from the school board standpoint, we just ought to, ought to make sure that they understand what the requirements are in order for a reopening in, in the traditional sense, it can be done in such a way that they can be kept safe. And it's easy for me to say exactly how that would happen. I'm, I'm not exactly sure. The other part of this that would worry me is the unpredictability of where the virus is actually going. That, you know, we, we may feel comfortable after a while that, hey, the number of cases has, has dropped. It's, it's safe for us to try to do this, but it could, it can change within, within a few weeks or days. And I think the district has to be prepared to be nimble enough to modulate between the two methodologies, whether it's a, a hybrid opening, partially in-school, partially remote, or whether it's, hey, we're going to go, try to go five days a week in, in class. You're going to have to be ready to react to what the environment is, is handing you. We may wish that the virus is going to go away, but that doesn't mean it's going to happen that way. So we, we, I, I think we, we can't lose sight of having to maintain that remote capability just in case we have to go back to it if it's, if it's ever, you know, becomes entirely necessary to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, Parker.
All right, what do you see, just briefly, two minutes or less, what do you see as your role as a school board member?
Well, I, I, in, in my mind, I, it, I may be repeating myself a little bit, but I, I look at a, a role as, as a school board member, again, not as a micromanager to tell you how to do your job. My, my job is to evaluate the plan. Is it logical? Does it answer the mail based on what, what we, we say our objective is? And have we set clear milestones for success and, and a way to manage and, and determine, once we're done, did we get where we needed to go? And was the plan transparent? Is the public aware of how the decision was made, what it was based on, what the risks are, what the opportunities are? And what's in it for us as a, as a district? Once we, we get to the implementation stage and the, and, and whatever we're talking about, a new policy or a, a way to open the schools or should we be looking, you know, just as making something up, should we be looking at whether or not we should be looking at privatization or some aspect like that? Because you at least have to make sure that, that the parents and the citizenry understand why the decision needs to be made, how that decision is to be made, what's going to be relied on to make that decision? And, and did we in fact have a justifiable position when we made the decision that we made? That's basically, and I, I would not expect to get into your, into your business as far as how you do, how you do your jobs at, at, at the district level, at the administrative level. It's, you know, you have to have some amount of trust, but you also have to provide some level of oversight. But it's not an audit-type function and certainly not a micromanagement-type function. It's more of a stewardship type thing, just to be cognizant of how the decisions are being made and how the processes are working and is everybody copacetic with, with the way things are, are, are working? That's, that's how I view it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lappic?
Hello, thank you for being here this evening and being so patient. We all have different skill sets. And this is curious, is there some single past work experience or volunteer experience that you feel is going to be most helpful to you as your role on the school board?
Well, I, I'll cite, I'll cite two. I, I had a number of different jobs within, within the same business. I was expected to, to be able to learn relatively quickly what was required and, and, and master it and, and, and improve the process of, of the area that I had migrated to. As, as far as experience that directly relates to this, to, to this position, I had two opportunities at the district that I lived in, in New Jersey. I, the, the way Jersey's set up, even if a, a school budget passes the board's vote, it has to go out for public referendum. And our PTA organizations in town were always supportive of, of, of the budget process. But they, they wanted someone who was financially oriented to help them interpret and read the tea leaves in, in the school budget that's, that was currently being promulgated. So I, I fulfilled a, what I'll call like a budget chair role for three or four years. I, I was actually called in by the business administrator and the superintendent to help them make certain decisions. Actually changed the decision on a bond once because they, they miscalculated some things and, and would not have been able to live up to the bond statement that, that was required. You know, and I also participated on, on two, two committees, one of which I chaired. First was related to facilities, identifying the projects that were to be top priority. And actually helped, because I had done pricing where, where I worked before, I, I was able to help them put bids to packages together out for solicitation. And we, we also did look at privatizing certain aspects of our facilities crew, including food service. And as the citizen chair, I, I, I took it upon myself to, to try to convince the others in the room that it's not just the financial aspect that we needed to be concerned about. We also needed to, to take into account that, that the types of positions that they were looking to privatize in, in many instances under the, under the current methodology, when they were staffed by district employees, it was that, it was that custodian that may be the only guy in the school when your kid shows up. Do you really want someone that doesn't work for the school district to do that job? Is it worth a little bit you're going to save to privatize that, to maybe take that risk on? So, you know, we, 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 we talked a lot about how we should be making the decision, wrote up a, a set of ground rules and, and then made ourselves adhere to those ground rules when making our recommendations to the superintendent on, on what, as parents, we, we would, we would like to see. And I, I think honestly, being able to to get out and talk to parents and, and community members, being able to get out and talk to principals and teachers and, and to the extent that, that's copacetic with the administration and to the extent it's going to be viable, given the COVID restraints. But I, I think you, you have to be accessible to the people who you're to help determining what their kid's school life is going to be like. That, that's the least you could do, is be accessible to them. And that, that would be my position, that I would want to make, make myself as available as I can. I am retired. I, you know, so I have a lot of time available to do that. So that would be my way of trying to get up to speed and, and get to know as much about how Pots Grove does its, its, its thing as, as I possibly could, as quickly as I could within reason. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, thank you. Thank you. That did, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Tremble. Thank you for putting your resume in and, and being here with us tonight and appreciate your patience. My question for you is, what do you like and dislike about Pots Grove School District?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to answer you this way. Everything I've read about Pots Grove School District has been positive. The academic results are, are great. The school climate from, from the, the people that I know that, that have kids that go here, the, the school climate is great. Teachers, teachers are competent. They care. They, they treat the kids as if they're, they're their own. You know, I don't have children in, in the district. I don't have that kind of insight into, into what goes on, but I, I get the feeling that the town is behind the district 100%. That they want the district to be successful. They want to ensure that the district gets the resources that it needs to, to satisfy the needs of the kids without pricing people out of the market from living in Pots Grove. And I mean, from what I've been able to, to read about, I, I haven't seen one thing that I would say I disliked. You know, I, I, again, I, without having kids in the district, it's hard for me to, to, to say I'm an expert in everything. Pots Grove School District, I'm, I'm not. I, I have a curve that I'm going to have to come up about that. But I, I have read everything that, that I could get my hands on in the last week, once the, the position was open. And, you know, I, I haven't seen anything that, that troubles me per se.
Well, 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 just so you know, we are a gem. We are a gem. But thank you for that.
I, I have a lot of friends that I I have a lot of friends that that have, they may not have kids that go to 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 Pots Grove Schools, but they have grandkids possibly and and they're they, you know, the the kid raves about it and the grandparent raves about it. That that's really all I, that's the depth of my knowledge at this at this stage. I'll have to be quite honest with you. Uh, but I have it like I tried to articulate, I have a plan for trying to get up that curve. You know, a little bit faster than I have so far, so.
Well, thank you for that.
No, you're welcome.
Hi, Mr. Tremble. Um, I know you can't see me because I'm on my phone. Um, at home, my laptop died at at the district office. So, um, anyway, my question is, um, uh, we're not a rubber stamp board. We don't just all vote the same way all the time. Um, we obviously disagree on certain points. We all have our certain, you know, specific opinions and um outlooks and and um, you know, just we're different people. So, um, if something comes up for vote that you're very passionate about and the vote doesn't go your way, how are you going to react to that?
Well, I I I think in 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 any aspect of your life, things aren't always going to go your way. And and if the majority decided to to go a different way, but they followed the right process and and they had some justification based on the data that was reviewed to to enable the board to make whatever decision each member was going to make. It, uh, w- will I, will I be disappointed? Sure, I would be disappointed. But would I allow it to uh have it affect my o- objectivity the next time around? No, I I I would not. I mean, I I managed programs where I worked at at General Electric. And and there were many times in program review meetings that you wanted things to go this way or that way, or your your recommended course of action was X, Y, and Z, but that someone decided to go with something different. I mean, as long as they had their reasons and they could justify it, it's you 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 accept it and you try to be supportive of that decision because your role is to make it a success, regardless of whose idea it was. And the board decides what's the best idea. The individual does it. So I I'm 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 okay with that, that there's not always going to be things that go your way. You're going to have to learn, learn to deal with it and learn to get behind the decision that was made and and do what you can do to make sure that it is a success, even if it wasn't your first choice. I think that's the least you could do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Mr. Tremble, my turn. When I look over the role of the school board, I always look at three different items as I find, to me, the most important. Hiring a superintendent and working with them. Obviously, working with the budget and developing a curriculum that's going to work for our students and with our teachers. Now, you've already mentioned, obviously, about the budget and working on like that. So I'm going to ask you about one of the areas I'm very passionate about is our curriculum. Right? And how we review it and the plans we go on, and we're always still working to get better. And I'm curious as into how familiar you are with our curriculum? And do you have any ideas as into how it's working? Could be improved, is better? And the tools that we have afforded our teachers and staff with the maps and different items they have?
Well, I'm I'm going to be very honest with you. Uh, no, I don't have a specific knowledge of your the ins and outs of your curriculum at 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 each at each grade level. I I don't. But uh I took a lot of jobs that I didn't have a specific knowledge upon entering the job. And I, by the time I got through, I knew, you know, I I knew what I needed to know. In fact, I I probably knew more than the guy that had me that had the job before me. And and so it it I realized that it would be incumbent on me if I want to be a fully contributing board member in all aspects. And the three you talk about are are would 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 make my top three as well. Because you you have to have good leadership. You you have to spend your money wisely. And you have to have a curriculum that meets not just the the needs of today, but what you think the needs of tomorrow might be. Because time doesn't stand still. So I I I can tell you that if you put your confidence in me, I I will do my best not to disappoint you. And I will try to get up to speed on those things that I know I don't know enough about right now a- as fast and as quickly as I can. And the only way that I know to do that is to go to those meetings and to talk to the people that are responsible for that. Not not to check on them, but hey, what can I learn from you? What 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 kind of what kind of insight can you give me so that I will make the 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 correct calls in the future? I, you know, I I I just don't have that time here to to be able to say, geez, yeah, I I I I know already what I need to know. I'd be lying to you if I if I said that. But but I I mean, I I I change jobs about every 18 months. And and e- each job was was the the next step o- o- up a ladder and it and it involved a skill set that I didn't have prior to that job. But I I pretty much improved each process as I as I went through and got recognized for that. Uh, I mean, I, you know, I I I I try to take things seriously, but not to the point where I become a pain in someone's rear end. You know, I I I know what I I I'll know what I need to know and I'll and I'll do my best to get that done as quickly as I can. That's that's all I could. That's really all I could.
Perfectly good answer. No, no, no. Thank you very much. Bob, you're on mute.
Can't hear. Thank you. I can't hear. I usually don't put it on mute. That's why it was such a shock to me. Um, I was just saying that it being on the board is not a it it's a thankless job at the best of times. And and right now, with the the decision we just took, it's it's going to be more thankless than usual. Um, because of the decision to go all virtual, we're going to be looking at probably um, some furloughs as soon as the next meeting. Um, we're going to have some budget decisions, very tough budget decisions to make soonish. Um, ev- everything's going to be very difficult this season, this year, going into the winter and the spring. And it's it's just going to be tough all the way around. So there's, like I said, there's going to be some very di- difficult budget decisions to make. Um, and there's not going to be a lot of good places to go. We're we're going to be looking at, um, I I don't want to say cuts necessarily, but either tax increases or drawing down the debt with our our budgetary reserve. Um, and certainly not really expanding programs. Um, so in terms of the priorities, how are we going to, you know, what are we, what are we going to do to balance? We don't have a lot of industry in in P- in the Pots Grove to draw on. Have a lot of an industrial base. And we don't have a lot of other things. I mean, basically, a lot of our stuff comes from taxpayers. And we we're how how are we going to be able to make these decisions? What do we, what what do we have to do other than to raise taxes? What are we going to be doing to try and get a handle on our budget? And what are we going to try and do? How how do we communicate good news? How do we communicate bad news to the taxpayers? What else? We what what are the alternatives? Do you see? How are we going to do this? And what are your thoughts?
I mean, for the when when I manage programs, the first thing we we did was try to quantify the size of the problem. And that would be our first step. How how far off are we? And and how confident are we that that's an accurate number? And then we always looked for ways to prioritize, you know, wh- what what has to, what what do we have to keep? What and 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 develop the candidates? And as long as you're, I mean, in my mind, anyway, as long as you're honest with people and you and you tell them why you have the shortfall, what what caused it? And what and why are you even having to contemplate what what choices you have to make? Uh, and 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 get their buy-in on on the validity of it? I mean, no one, I I I wouldn't think is going to say, well, go ahead and tax me. You take me up to whatever Act One's going to allow you to do. Uh, I I don't know that that's the way that the the townspeople here would react or or not. But I would start with the the quantification. I would start with and follow that up with what what drove that. And and if people understand that, you know, there's really not a heck of a lot you can do about it, maybe you enlist their help in making the choice. You you get some kind of, to the extent you have the time available to do this. You know, what 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 do parent groups want uh you to prioritize? What would they be willing to do without? And get their get their input into how you make that decision before you before you put the cuts in place or the reductions, but however you want to describe it. But you solicit their input because you value their input. And you let them know you value it. And and if and if they get some input into the decision, possibly that also gets you some buy-in from their vantage point in in the decision. Because they understand what the what drove the problem. And if it's COVID related, because you had, you know, revenues are down or you 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 ended up with more work to with with the to develop the virtual uh capability than you had anticipated or whatever. So a lot of that can be considered beyond your control. And if you make them part of the solution and help and 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 give them an input to what you what they want prioritized, what they're willing to do without, I I think that goes a long way towards getting buy-in from John Q. Public. Uh, you know, a- as far as what ultimately is going to have to happen, because you have to balance your budget. You don't have a choice. So, uh, you know, I I at this stage, without knowing the size or or what's driving it, I it's hard for me to comment more more than that. But where I lived in Jersey, that that was basically my job. I would talk to the superintendent, find out what his problems were, go back out to the to the to the PTAs in town at the various schools. We had 11 schools, uh, and and solicit their input. And it did, it did work there.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
To round one. So seven more questions, you're home free. So we'll just go right into round two.
I'm just getting warmed up, so.
Is that a movie called Scent of a Woman, Al Pacino? It sounds like.
Pretty, well, that that's probably my favorite Al Pacino movie, so, yeah.
Yeah, I picked it up. Picked up on that. Okay, Dr. Nipper, you're next.
Okay, we're we're at the point where we're starting to pass, uh, we're like kids warming up for basketball and we're passing basketballs around. Uh, I'm going to hit a question that I think is going to be important. Uh, there are three things that Mr. Leach mentioned. Uh, the superintendent, uh, the budget and the curriculum. And just to follow up on Mr. Leach's question, he can ask mine later on. Uh, what do you think your role relative to the superintendent uh is as a board member?
In 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 hiring one or in in managing, like, working with the guy that we already that you already have?
Yeah, let's take it whichever way you want, but I think your your last answer is probably the be- best starting point.
I I I think the the board's role would would be one of setting the appropriate goals for the individual. I mean, given that you select a quality guy or woman, and I'm sure that you have, okay? Uh, that what motivates most people is how they're recompensed. And and I would assume, uh, you know, part of his evaluation process is did he meet his goals? So you want to make sure the goals are measurable. You want to make sure that that they're meaningful and and that he understands them and that you are working with him on a regular enough basis where if you get the inkling that goal number one or goal number two, whichever one uh comes into play, may or may not be being met, that you you I won't say intercede, but you you have some, you know, a- along the way type conversations with 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 them and and try to help them get back on track if that's what's required. If if that's not required, you just get a good status and everything's working good. And the goals that you set up for the individual, you're confident are going to be met. Everyone is everyone is happy. But it's, again, I'll 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 focus on the process. If you if you you hire a good guy or a good woman, you set the right goals for them, you set up the right measurement points for them, and you set up the right incentive criteria for them, it ought to work. And and if you're following through and not waiting until it's all said and done, and you have periodic conversations with the person about their status, that I I I think I think that person will be successful and your process will be successful.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so uh if you're appointed to this position on the board to fill the empty seat, come uh next election, uh, when it's time to run, will you be uh running uh to stay in that position? And if you do, will the retired senior citizens vote for you? And if so, why? And will the parents in our community be voting for you? And if so, why?
Well, I'm 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 going to say, as of as of today, yes, my plan would be if I if I got appointed, I would I would run for the 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 position when it opened up in November of 21. And my my non-board, you know, as far as the the day-to-day stuff task is includes meeting with senior citizen groups and as well as meeting with the parent groups. And I I I'm hoping that whatever performance they can glean from their attending board meetings or watching the board meetings on on CCTV or whatever, that they that they'll be happy with what I'm able to contribute during the meeting and in the decision-making process. And they're happy with their interactions with me when we have the opportunity to get together. And uh, I'm I'm living in a community that has a a pretty good mix of of parents and and seniors. I mean, most of the people that live right around me are seniors, but there's a number of families in the development that are have children of school age. So I, you know, I I have the opportunity to meet them that way. But I my my plan would also include trying to get involved with the parent-teacher organizations and and go attend their meetings and see what 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 concerns they they bring up. And try to give them input into our process. So I could come back. If we had a meeting, I could provide that feedback. Here's what they told me was important to them or the the what they're expecting out of out of the the group of nine that we would comprise. You know, it's I I don't know what else I I could add to that.
That's good. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Lappic.
And hello again. Um, what qualities do you think are important to have in order to be an effective board member?
Uh, I'm going to say in my mind, humility, open-mindedness, not having to be right all the time. Uh, being a team player. Okay, understanding that big things usually get accomplished by teams, not by individuals. That that it 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 usually takes a team effort to get anything worthwhile accomplished. And and the team only functions well if every team member is respected, every team member is appreciated, every team member's input is welcome. And uh, and that it's okay to ask questions when you don't understand something. And or you're unclear on on where a discussion is going. But I based on the two people that I know best on the board right now, which is Chuck and Patty Grim, i- if they were very kind to me. if they were very kind to me when they didn't need to be, okay? And I would welcome being part of a team like that. That those kinds of interactions foster your desire to be part of a successful team, but also to contribute to that. And the only way you can honestly do that is to not have to be at the forefront all the time. You're one of nine. You're not the head of the nine. You're a support player. And, you know, and it takes all nine cylinders to fire to get the machine to do what you needed to do. But, you know, you're no more important than the next guy other than the board president, I'll say. But, you know, every group that I ran, we ran as a team. Everybody had their role. Every role was appreciated. We met twice a week in my office to make sure things were on track. And, you know, I had a job where they hired 12, we were so far behind that, you know, I finally got submissions in because, you know, it was guys that had my job two or three times, two or three years before I did or two or three terms before I did. And when we finally got all the submissions in that needed to be turned in, they hired 12 auditors. It was just myself and another woman who had turned in all these overhead rate proposals. And it was like being a one-armed paper hanger. And we had to enlist the rest of our team in order to satisfy 12 auditor's questions and do it successfully and do it in a timely manner. And it meant certain of those team members had to fulfill different roles than they signed up for. And so you had to convince them that, hey, that's what being a team guy is. And I was lucky that I picked the right kind of people that accepted the team mentality as well as I did and as well as the woman that I worked with did. And we successfully navigated those waters, didn't lose a nickel. More thanks to the guys we brought in and the woman than me. I just kind of steered it, okay? But I, that's how I view myself. I would want to be your favorite team member. Hey, boy, that guy never complains. He does what we ask him to do. He listens when he needs to listen. He asks questions when he really doesn't understand something, but he doesn't try to overpower the conversation. And I think that's the kind of team member I'd like to have. So that's the kind of team member I ought to sign up to be. And that would be my commitment to you. That would be my goal. I would not want to be a thorn in anyone's side. I would not want you to roll your eyes every time I open my mouth. So, you know, I'm confident in my abilities, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to ask questions. Because like I've already admitted two or three times already, I'm not an expert on all things Pots Grove. But I'll get to as good an understanding as I can as quickly as I can. That would be my commitment to you.
Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm back, Mr. Trimble. What is your greatest achievement?
My greatest achievement?
Yes.
Well, is that my entire life or my work life or any?
Whatever you want. Whatever you want. What is your greatest achievement?
Well, my greatest achievement, I would say, would be raising four happy, healthy kids that are all successful now. They, one has a family. Two have started their own businesses and are working their tails off, but they're, they get 100% return on the effort that they put in. And the third is doing something she loves. She's a social worker finding homes for veteran homeless people in Philadelphia. And she loves it. And it may not have been the life I chose for her because it's not always the safest route for her. But she really, she really likes it. And they're all confident. They're their own people. They get along famously when they're together. And I'm just, the only part that makes me sad is we're also spread apart. I got one in Colorado, one in Texas, and two in Philadelphia. And it's just, we don't get a chance to all be together very often. So, you know, I would say that would be it. You know, it's, all I ever wanted from day one was to have a nice family and I was lucky enough to do so. No, and...
Oh, you're a lucky man. Thank you.
That's the definition of lucky.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, it's my turn. So being a board member doesn't mean just attending two meetings a month. There's a lot more that goes into it. Many of us sit on other boards or are representatives of the district to other organizations. There's also committees that we all sit on. Some of us chair those committees. And then in addition to that, there's, you know, activities that we attend, you know, just because, because we are part of the Pots Grove community. So would that be a problem? Would you be able to jump in with both feet and, you know, knowing that you're going to have at least one night a month where you're going to be in a meeting somewhere?
And that's, and that's, and that's fine. I had a conversation with Mrs. Grim a while back. And, you know, she talked about how accessible she has made herself to parents and how many events she goes to and what a good feeling it gives her. And honestly, if you're, if you're going to sign up to do this kind of job, don't sign up if you're not willing to go all in. And I, and I, and I think, because of my, you know, newness to Pots Grove, I've only been here, you know, about two years. I just haven't, I don't have kids in the schools. I did not have a reason to get all that involved. But if I want to do an effective job here, I'm going to have to be all in. And being all in says, hey, it's not all work and no play. I mean, all in says you go to, you go to events as they happen. Because that gives you an opportunity to celebrate kids' achievements with them and they'll see you there. And maybe that motivates them a little bit. Maybe it doesn't. But it would motivate me because then you'd see the results of what you do spend the time on in a meeting or whatever come to fruition. You see, kids are happy. They have opportunities to learn outside of the school, skills that they don't get from book learning. You know, I mean, some of the best lessons I learned in life, I learned at the 40-yard line, that things don't always go your way, but you still got to do your job. I'm a New England Patriot fan because that's their motto. Just do your job, okay? And a school system is kind of like the New England Patriots. If everybody does what they're supposed to do, you get over the goal line. If you're not doing what you're supposed to, if you're not all in to the, to what the mentality is, hey, it probably isn't going to be as big a success as it could have been. So you can count me in, okay? And, but I will say, I will caveat it with one item, that it, as a quasi-outsider, okay? I would need help making some of those contacts, okay? So I would hope some of you would help me in that regard to get my feet wet with whomever it is, whether it's parent groups, whether it's principals, whether it's the administrative team, whatever, just to be able to come up and learn the curve as quickly as I can. I could use a little bit of help with that. But as far as desiring to do it or being willing to do it, yeah, that's not a problem for me.
Okay, thank you.
No, again, thank you. This is an opportunity.
All right, so it's back up to me. So first, I'm not going to take it against you for being a Patriots fan. It's Eagle country, but no. Serious aside, obviously, the biggest element that has happened, obviously, over the last eight months and such like that. And we weren't able to hear it earlier. We had someone of the public wanted to ask, obviously, a question. And the natural question everybody's asking of the public is your thoughts on us voting for virtual versus voting for the hybrid? Right? So the public was going to ask the question as into your thoughts as into which way you would have voted. And then obviously, what you feel is the best way to make it safe to eventually, is what is necessary to make it safe so that the kids can go back to school?
Well, I probably would have voted with the majority to keep it virtual at this stage. Because I, everything I read about the virus is, it's unpredictable. You're down one day, you could be right back where you were last March tomorrow and through no fault of your own. And no one, I, 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 maybe I'm overstating it, but I would find it difficult if I made a decision to open up too soon and kids got sick or whatever as a result of that decision. And I'll go back to what I said maybe a little bit earlier in this process, that having the virtual capability creates an asset for the district. Doing some of the tasks that you have to do to ensure that you can reopen safely. I'm not sure you have a real asset as a result of making those expenditures. And you set more than just the kids up for potential harm. And the predictability of what costs you could incur as a result of opening up too soon, I wouldn't know how to quantify. If someone gets sick, they have to be quarantined. Do all the kids that they were exposed to have to be quarantined? Do anybody that those kids went home to that got exposed have to be quarantined? And who pays for all that? What's the process that decides how all that gets divvied up? So I would say, I would be happy with a decision that said, we're going to go with the remote learning and get that to work so that we can turn it on, turn it off, jump back to it if we have to later on. But solicit as much guidance as can be discerned from the state so that, hey, you're not the only ones hanging out there behind the decision as the, what's going to be, what's going to need to be done in order to make things as safe as possible. I think you have to figure out a way to get some level of commitment from the parents to reinforce the message that social distancing, wearing masks, not sharing food, not sharing drinks, not shaking hands, not getting in too close of physical contact, has to be adhered to or you don't get to go to school that way again. Because that's what triggers the safety valve, that you have to go back to the remote style. So maybe you use your schedule that you're going to stay remote learning to enable parents and groups and what have you to help convince the kids who have, you know, especially the younger kids. I've never known any of my four kids that would have been able to control themselves and social distance at the kindergarten, first grade, second grade level. I just, they were too off the wall. I mean, that's just the way little kids are. And we have to recognize that. But also, in my mind, solicit the support of the parents to make sure that that safety mentality is reinforced at home. You're going to go to school with the mask. You're going to keep it on when you're at school. You're going to do what your teacher tells you as far as staying six feet apart or staying, you know, however the classrooms are laid out to ensure the social distance. And you're not going to disrupt that. Because without your willingness to do that, the school can't operate that way and we're going to have to go back to the remote way. So I, you know, I would, again, look at developing the virtual capability as developing a future asset. Because even when you go back to running it in the bill as in the traditional way, that doesn't mean there isn't ever going to be another need to go back to the virtual way. And you may end up with as good a product as is out there and you could possibly save money if you got, you have kids from Pots Grove that are going to a cyber charter. Maybe they decide, hey, I'm going to go where everybody else is going. I'm going to use the virtual capability right here at Pots Grove and not pay 15 or 20 grand a kid to send them to a cyber charter. You don't get that by just cleaning, you know, setting up a process where rooms are kept clean, kids are kept socially distant, kids are keeping their masks on. No one gets smarter from that. But they do, you have the opportunity to provide a capability that even after COVID's gone can be an asset to you because the need to go to a cyber gets reduced. And from what I've read from all the Stanford Credo studies, the longer a kid goes to a cyber charter, the further behind they fall. There was not one positive score that cyber charters in Pennsylvania received from the last Stanford Credo study I read. And, you know, why they haven't moved on reducing the tuition to the 5K limit yet, I don't know. I don't understand that. Governor Wolf wouldn't make that kind of a decision in his furniture business. It's a make-buy. And if you can do it for five grand, you'd have to have some overwhelming reason to pay them 10. There's got to be some, because it's not their performance. Because Stanford's objective, they look at it. They don't care if it's good or bad. They only care that they analyzed it properly. And it's not worth the money. It's not to send them to a cyber. But it's probably worth it to send it to yours because you probably have a truancy function. If a kid doesn't sign on, their mom and dad get a call. Someone is contacted. That doesn't happen with cyber charters. So I think the district made a great call. I really do. Because you're going to have the opportunity to train teachers to use that tool as effectively as you can. And that's worth the money because you're going to be able to use that even when the virus isn't in effect in an attempt to possibly reduce your charter cost if, in fact, you are sending kids to cyber, to one of the cyber academies. Okay? Now, I thought you did. And honestly, just while we're talking about it, I'd like to be able to introduce to everybody else just the fact that we ought to be creating an advocacy function at Pots Grove to advocate for charter reform. And I've been looking at that for the last two years. And there's, there's just no reason not to do it. Charters are getting paid for work they don't have to do. And it's, and it's, and costs that they don't incur. It goes beyond just the problem with the way special ed tuition is calculated. They don't pay the same pension costs. They don't pay the same healthcare costs. They don't pay the same salaries. Why are we paying them as if they do? We shouldn't be.
Because the formula was written, the formula was written before there were cyber charters.
Right, the formula was written when cyber enrollment was less than a percent of total district.
Cyber didn't exist. The law was stated in 1990. How much internet existed in 1990?
No, I understand the why, but I don't, I don't understand how it happened. I don't understand why it's still allowed to happen. And, because it's a tremendous amount of money.
Thank you. All right, we've gotten off track. We come to the end of our questions, so thank you very much. I do appreciate your time.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for sticking through this.
Thanks, Lloyd. So at this time, do you want to bring? You can, either way.
We can bring them all.
Or we can, well, we're going to talk about it now. They're welcome.
We can bring them all back and play the dating game music.
Yeah, please. So.
So are we voting before we bring them in? What are we doing?
The gentleman have all reassembled back into the boardroom now. So we've got the unusual situation where the boardroom is full of our five potential new board members and there are no board members in the boardroom except now Mr. Leach is in the boardroom. So we have one board member and five potential board members in there now. So now that he's back, we're all assembled. Our seven board members are here. At this time, what we're going to be doing is whittling down and getting to, you know, it's kind of a Highlander thing, right? In the end, there can be only one. And the way we're going to try and figure that out is that, as I mentioned to you before, and everybody, is everybody listening? The first round, the first round, anybody who gets no votes does not advance to the second round. After the first round, anybody who gets one vote or no votes does not advance. And then if we get deadlocked at 322 or something like that, 322, then we may end up having to have, you know, people come back in for tiebreaker or something like that. We might have to do something unique, but I don't imagine that'll happen. First one to get to four votes wins, and that's that. Any questions, comments, worries, concerns about that?
I guess we have to vote publicly, right?
Yep. There's no executive session here. So all deliberations have to be in public and the vote has to be in public. So rather than do the whole thing about opening nominations and closing nominations and all that stuff, we're not, there's no real point to doing that. So there are seven of us. So it's just a real quick question of who wants to say, who wants to start? We can just go around real quick and throw out the name. And we'll start, I think we'll start just the way we've been doing it. Doctor, if that's all right, I'll just start with Dr. Nipper. And Dr. Nipper, you'll, you'll, I'll just ask you who you
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Who would you like to?
John Trumbull.
Mr. Trumbull. Okay, very good. One from Mr. Trumbull. Mr. Parker.
Jay Strunk.
Mr. Strunk, very good. Mr. Lappett.
Bill Thompson.
Mr. Thompson, that's one. Okay, so that's three so far. Mrs. Wim.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Very impressed with Strunk.
Okay, Mr. Strunk. Ms. Custer.
Bill Thompson.
Bill Thompson, that's two there. Mr. Leach.
Jason McHugh.
Jason McHugh. And I cast my vote for Mr. McHugh as well. So Dr. Davis, thank you very much for joining us today. I do want to say, this is sometimes, I'm sorry, because it's 11:33, that's my only excuse, 11:40, I wanted to say that we are very, very, very honored to have had five such amazingly qualified and really outstanding candidates. This has been an embarrassment of riches for the district to have five such wonderful candidates. You all spoke very, very well. We would have been well honored to have any of you five to be our selected candidate. Any of you, we would have been fine with any of you. If any of you had walked in and been selected, we would have been well served. So thanks to all of you for coming in and met with us. So that's what I'll say there. So that's where we're at. So we now have, at this time, we have, for the next round, we have Ms. McHugh, Mr. Strunk, Mr. Thompson, and Mr. Trumbull. Like I said, with each two, so Mr. McHugh, Mr. Strunk, Mr. Thompson, each have two, and Mr. Trumbull has one.
So are you keeping all that were voted for? Because then I don't know that the vote's going to change unless somebody changes their vote? Or did I misunderstand?
Yeah, well, only because that's what I said I was going to do.
Okay. Makes sense, but.
There's no real point in doing that. There's no real point in doing that. You're right.
Musical chairs or I don't know?
There's no real point in doing that. So with that, we'll say we're going on to round three. And
What happened to round two?
In the Navy.
He slept for a check.
Round three. And round three has Mr. McHugh, Mr. Strunk, and Mr. Thompson as our candidates.
Did we say goodbye to Mr. Trumbull?
We did say goodbye. In the second round, he had one vote.
Oh, I didn't know he knew that already. Okay.
Yeah. So that means I believe that Chuck has to change his vote.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. I want to make sure I'm, you know, I have to think. And what's the score right now for the remainders?
Two, two, two.
Tied across the board. Mr. McHugh has two, Mr. Strunk has two, Mr. Thompson has two.
Everybody has two.
Everybody who remains has two. And those remainders are Mr. McHugh, Mr. Strunk, and Mr. Thompson. Four now.
Mr. Strunk and Mr. Thompson. Would it help if you saw them again, Chuck? If you brought them out so you could see their faces?
No, 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 no. No, I'm just looking through my notes. Give me a second to look through my notes because somewhere along the line I was counting on a vote when I might actually have a chance to do some advanced planning.
Is anyone else interested in changing the vote? We should maybe ask that just by just throwing it out there?
Well, basically, this is what I was thinking is that at this time, what we're going to have to start doing is just saying, okay, we have to call them by name.
I will change my vote. Are we doing the whole roll call or do I get?
You're the one.
You're special, Chuck.
You're the special one. That's right, yeah. Special.
No, 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 no. I just needed to look through my notes because I had to, you know, I made notes on the various resumes and I wanted to make sure I was talking to the picking the right person.
Drumroll, please.
Well, I said Strunk.
Take your time. Make it right. Make it the right one. No pressure, Chuck.
I think I said it several times.
Look, the sun is coming up.
How many times do I have to say it?
With Strunk, he said.
I said Strunk several times.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, we're too busy teasing you.
Yeah, I know.
So that's fine. So we're at that, we have the 322. We have two for Mr. McHugh, three for Mr. Strunk, and two for Mr. Thompson. So that's all well and good as far as it goes, but that gets us nowhere. We have to have a four-person vote. We have to have four for somebody. And we don't have a winner.
Unless we were in Philadelphia, all I was going to do was add one vote, so.
Wow. Do you have any idea the temptation I have to make comment right now? Oh, my God, this is so hard. But I'm not. I'm going to refrain. So we have to get to four. So.
I wish I remembered how we did it last time.
Hey, Bob. Bob, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Would it be fair to let the candidates go and then we can discuss this so they're not here and have to go through constantly going back and forth and such?
They absolutely can. I mean, certainly, we can let Dr. Davis and Mr. Trumbull go if they so desire.
We're not going to bring anybody back until Tuesday anyway to do sworn in.
That's correct. That's absolutely the truth. I mean, they can.
Just remember, we're still in a public meeting, so we still have the public here.
Yeah. The public's here and the public's going to stay. We're not going to cut anybody off.
Tell.
That's right.
So what's happening now?
How did we know how we did it last time?
We didn't come in, we didn't have this issue last time.
You're right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, that's what I'm trying to remember why.
No, when we voted Bob in, it was almost unanimous. And I believe it was, I think with Tina, it was a five-four.
We have one elimination with Tina, but I think Ashley remembers it pretty.
Or it was like, no, because we only had eight at the time.
Yeah.
But.
Chuck, you got Robert's rules. See what they suggest.
Well, he outlined the rule of an elimination and Robert's rules govern, you know, Robert's rules doesn't specify the procedure. The election is whatever you want to do. We've got to get, we've got to get a majority.
Here's my suggestion. My suggestion would be that we have one candidate with three. He is advancing to, let's say, the final round. You have two candidates at two.
Right.
My suggestion would be that we met, Mr. Strunk has now moved to the final round, and we all vote on Hugh and Thompson and see if we can get one of them two to have a majority. And then we'll vote whoever wins the majority there against Mr. Strunk.
That sounds actually swift and reasonable.
So basically, you're saying, basically, you're saying we were going to have another round of interviews, Al?
No, 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 no. Just vote, just vote. In essence, Mr. Strunk wins the final round. He won the semifinals. You and Mr. Thompson.
Ready for the runner.
And then everybody votes on just those two only. And then whoever wins out of them two will go against Mr. Strunk in a final vote.
All right. That makes sense. As much sense as that. Very good. All right.
It's actually your second choice.
All right, then.
You have two votes. One, you either vote for Mr. McHugh or you can vote for Mr. Thompson. That's the only vote right now we have.
Okay. All right, then. Dr. Nipper, are you voting for Mr. McHugh or Mr. Thompson?
McHugh.
Okay. Dr. Nipper for McHugh. Mr. Parker for McHugh or Thompson?
They're both qualified, but I'll go with McHugh.
Lappett for you or Thompson?
I'm going to stay with Mr. Thompson.
Very good. Patty Graham, are you for McHugh or Thompson?
You.
Very good. Mrs. Custer, are you for McHugh or Thompson?
Thompson.
Very good. Mr. Leach, are you for McHugh or Thompson?
McHugh.
Very good. And I am for McHugh as well.
That's five. So now the vote is Strunk or Hugh?
Strunk or McHugh. Now the vote is for Strunk or McHugh. So we'll just do the same thing again. Thank you very much. So Dr. Nipper.
Strunk.
Strunk. One for Strunk.
This is for between Strunk and, I'm sorry, yeah, Strunk.
Strunk or McHugh?
McHugh.
Yeah, okay, that's my thought. So this is the final. Got it. Just making sure.
Welcome, McHugh. Dr. Nipper, you have voted for Strunk.
I already voted.
Yeah, Strunk.
Yeah. Mr. Parker, Strunk or McHugh?
Strunk.
Mr. Lappett, Strunk or McHugh?
Strunk.
Patty Graham, Strunk or McHugh?
Strunk.
Not yet. One more.
Mr. Strunk, congratulations.
Okay, let's breathe in and breathe out. All my years on the board, never.
It's 2020.
I know, but I love this board.
Well, we have, we have made our decision and there we are. So what I would, what I would like to say, having gotten there, is that what we said is what we said. And now we've got one individual selected whom we will welcome onto the board officially on Tuesday night. And we've got, in my opinion, four people that we would like to see running come, not this February, yeah, this February, February 21, for seats to be taken in December of 21. So thank you all for coming out tonight and for staying with us until midnight. Me too, this evening and getting it done. So thanks, everyone, and look forward to seeing you soon.
Do the candidates know who won or not yet?
Congratulations.
Yeah, they're here. They're right 10 feet away from me. Oh, I'm sorry. We have one, two last things to do. We have to take public comment at this time. And Ashley's not here to open the mics. Lori, can I get you to take care of that for us, please? If there's anybody with raised balls.
I don't see any, Bob.
Oh, thank, okay. Very good.
Yeah, I am actually able to see that on my phone, so.
No, I got to thank, there's 29 people that are still online that has stuck around to 11:52. That's.
Mine says 41.
What's that?
Mine says 41.
Well, that includes us.
I don't count us. I just count the vote.
Oh, okay, you're doing.
Well, we have 29 other people that should run.
I gave up a arithmetic at midnight. My calculator turns into a.
All right. I'll take the motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Good night, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.